Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our April 22nd Select Board meeting. I'm going to call this meeting to order at 7:01. If everyone could join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start with public comment this evening. Per the Select Board policy, public comment is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between citizens and the Select Board. It is a citizen's opportunity to express his or her opinion on issues of town business. The Board may respond to a public comment by taking it under consideration when deliberating on an agenda item or referring the item to the administration for appropriate action or response. Public comment shall be for a period of up to 15 minutes with speakers being allowed three minutes to present their material. Is anyone here for public comment? No? All right. We will move on to our governmental reports this evening, and I would like to ask Chief Gray to come up and talk to us about the new cameras.
Good evening. I'm just going to hand out a list of the current locations we have the cameras set up now. So, this project started out, every month, we have monthly chief meetings with Essex County, with Northeast Massachusetts Law Enforcement Council and the Mass Chiefs. And in speaking to our area, Mary Mac Valley Chiefs, Chief Vasque in Lawrence had a fantastic project that he put the city cameras all around the city. And at first, he, you know, experienced the pushback. People were concerned about, you know, getting written a ticket for a red light, which they don't do, or invading people's privacy. And it got to the point where it was such a success that most of the city councilors in the city were saying, "I only have six cameras in my district, and that person has 15. How come I don't have as many?" So, it really is a wonderful thing. So, we began with the help of the town manager and the deputy. We applied for the Opera funding, as you can see in the paperwork, and a JAG grant, and we started putting up the cameras. Director Jonathan Bonano has been instrumental in getting them placed around town. What everyone should know is that they are in strategic areas, not so much for population-wise, but for traffic and pedestrian motor vehicle, you know, traffic as well. It's, they're not zoom cameras. They don't zoom in on people's houses or yards or anything like that. Unfortunately, we had a homicide in the last month. And I will say, two days after we flipped the switch on the cameras, they were instrumental in helping solve that crime. So, we're hoping for great things with the cameras. My plan is to, moving forward with every budget, adding a few more around town. We're starting in the downtown area because it is the busiest, and we're going to be branching out. One of the things with the cameras is we can't just put a camera at Boxford Street at the town line because we have to have it feed in through town, so it ends up here at 120 Main Street. So, most of the cameras you see on that paperwork are in the downtown area and then branching out along 114, 125, and the borders, which is Mass Ave, Sutton Street, 114.
So, you said they're all hardwired in?
They are, yes. And they, well, some of them are radio because we couldn't make a jump. But, you know, for the most part, they're already reaping benefits. We have training tomorrow for the supervisors to be able to access them whenever they want and utilize them. We're expecting a lot of, from what Chief Vasque told me in the city, and Methuen has these as well, and it was getting them after us. Havrell has them as well. Chief Estoney was saying that they're getting a lot of requests from, like, insurance companies and stuff because of the accident at the intersections, and they're helping, you know, solve those relatively quickly. So, again, nothing but positive things.
And they're not monitored? It's something you look back at, right?
So, we can monitor it.
You can, yes.
Yeah, so if there's something happening, you know, someone says there's a crash at Main and 125, we can key into it and watch it real time. But then we can also go back and save the feed up to 30 days and then, you know, basically copy it and send it out to whoever needs it.
But nobody's sitting there watching consistently?
I would hope not.
No, but that's what people are asking, like, that's one of the concerns that we heard, is like, well, now they're constantly watching us, and that's not the case at all.
So, we're going to have a ton of monitors, yes. But, you know, the City of Lawrence has 500 cameras. You know, we have, you can see what we have right there. But, you know, like I said, the people see that the sensors on top of the traffic lights, they think those are cameras. And they're not, they're sensors. But the cameras we do have up, we're not writing traffic tickets based on what goes on there.
That's exactly my point, is that you're not
Right.
You're not looking for red light runners.
Right, right.
Yeah. So, no, I appreciate that, because that was some of the questions, as people started to see them popping up.
Yep. And again, it was placed in strategic places with pedestrian motor vehicle traffic where it's very busy.
Yeah.
Without going into too much detail, if it can, but it may help residents out, can you kind of talk in general about how they help you solve a crime?
Well, for example, if there's an intersection accident where liability is in question, we can get the footage and show it to not only the occupants or the drivers, but give it to their insurance companies so they can determine who's at fault. When we had that homicide, you know, we were able to identify a vehicle that was of interest. And without getting into too much detail, you know, within a certain amount of time, which was unheard of, we had a suspect in custody.
Yeah, no, I think it's definitely positive.
I mean, we're open to suggestions if people want cameras in certain places. You know, we're open to, you know, next round, we get some, you know, if they want a certain place, we'd be happy to listen.
Any other questions?
Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, we get a lot of questions.
Okay, anytime.
Yeah. Thank you so much, Chief.
Okay.
All right, we'll be moving on to warrant Article 5 with our Animal Control Officer, Brad DeSenzio.
Good evening. I'm pretty much, I'm bringing Article 5 up in front of you guys just to monitor, bring the town of North Andover up to code. The state laws have changed a lot over the years. We're now bringing in MSPCA law enforcement, outside jurisdiction law enforcement to come enforce some of the laws. I'm trying to then bring them into our bylaws so that I can enforce them, keep everything local. I know the people here, people know me. If people want to fight the tickets, they can now come into the police station and go in front of a hearing authority instead of going to Lawrence District Court. More or less, I'm just trying to bring the town up to 2023. Town's growing, town's changing. We're having a lot more apartment buildings coming in, condos, stuff like that. So, I was trying to add safety things, from what I saw from working in a city. And more or less, just trying to bring us more localized instead of having outside companies coming in and doing what we can do here.
If a owner or resident has, you know, has a number of pets or certain types of pets that don't meet the new, you know, the proposed new rules, are they grandfathered in or they have to meet, you know, the updated bylaws?
So, if it's dogs, they have to have a kennel license. If it's cats, where I'm not looking to go into every single person's household and saying, "Oh, nope, you need to get rid of every single cat except for four." That is, it's pretty much, it would be grandfathered in unless it turns into a health code violation. If I walk in there and, even if you have five cats and there's a major hoarding situation, there's species everywhere, I'm going to look at you and say, "You're going to have to downsize." And that just comes out of public health and their safety. So, I'm not going to show up at your house if these bylaws pass and say, "Oops, nope, you have to get rid of a cat." And especially because I'm a cat lover. Most people know that. So, short answer, yes. But there is certain things in the law already that say, like turtles. You have to be able to prove that you've had a turtle for so long, or else it's technically illegal. So, yes, yes, they would be grandfathered in, but I'm not going to go to every single house and say, "Okay, you have five cats this year," and then show up three years later and say, "Oh, nope, now you have seven." So, it's there to use as a tool, but I'm not going to go door-to-door making sure you only have four.
If needed, don't it?
Yes. So, we're seeing, mental health is on the rise. And with mental health, a lot of people will go towards animals. And they'll start out with two, then it's 10, then it's 18. And then when you go there, you always have to expect to double the number. So, if they're telling you 10, it's really 20. And it's not just dogs, cats, it's birds, it's guinea pigs, it's hamsters, it's ferrets, it's snakes. So, that's the reasoning for that. It's more of a public health, safety thing, just in case it gets overbearin'.
Over, too much.
Yeah.
Brad works really closely with Brian LaGrasse and the Board of Health on a lot of these issues. So, Brian has reviewed the bylaw changes as well, and some of these were based on his recommendation, too.
And you, makes it more consistent with, like, other communities around us?
Yes.
And brings us sort of up to date?
Yes. So, like, I'll use Havrell as an example, because I came from Havrell originally. We have, there, it's four pets, period. So, if you have two cats, two dogs, you're done. And there, animal inspector is very strict. And then they also have, if you're in an apartment building, you can't have a snake. Because then that snake could go from this unit to this unit to this unit to this unit.
Don't eat us, yeah.
A lot of mother of boys.
So, a lot of that, I agree with Havrell, and she helped me put it together. I went to Brian with the Board of Health, he actually lowered my numbers. Because as I said, I love my cats. So, originally, I was saying six.
Yeah.
And I got that four. Okay. I have three, and I personally could not handle any more than three.
I guess, getting back to Dave's point real quick, you say you're not going to go door-to-door, obviously, but is there anything in the ordinance that says the next animal control officer won't? You'll do that?
Well, I don't plan on going anywhere.
Understood, but these tend to outlast all of us.
Correct. There is not.
Especially turtles.
Especially turtles, yeah.
There is not. We could look into putting some kind of wording into that.
Okay.
It's a little hard, I think, particularly the cats, because they don't, were not registered. So, for a dog, it's, I think you have an easier threshold, right? We can go to your house and say, "You had three dogs registered when this bylaw passed, and now you have seven dogs registered, so obviously you're not in compliance." With cats, I think it's going to be a harder burden.
Yes.
I think using this in a sanitary code together are going to be really important tools for some of the things that we see, particularly in our hoarding instances. But I do think it's going to be a much tougher burden to prove, right? Because unless it's a kitten, right, it's going to be tough to argue that you didn't already have this cat, right? So, I think that he's going to have to use all the tools in his toolkit at first.
Yes.
And it would have to be a complaint, you probably work off complaints, right?
Correct. I'm not, I have no right entering someone's house just to count your number of animals. And even then, and even then, if all looks well, it's, you have discretion. A lot of this job is not black and white, it's gray. So, you have to work off of discretion a lot. So, even without the bylaw right now, it's a lot of, okay, I'll come back next week, we'll see what the cats look like, and you kind of do step-by-step. Because even with mental health, bylaw and no bylaw, the bylaw says four. With mental health, you're still taking step-by-step. So, it could take six months, eight months, a year before you can even get one cat away from them. Because just because there's a bylaw doesn't give you the right to take. It's just an extra tool for my tool belt.
The changes to the running-at-large section, which I guess is essentially leash law, correct?
Yep.
And that's going to apply to public property as well?
Correct.
Right? Because I think that's one of the things I do hear a lot from walkers on various trails as we have had. So, I guess this doesn't, does this change anything existing, or is it more of an enforcement issue?
So, it changes a little bit. So, right now, our bylaw says nothing about voice control, holding the physical leash. I get a lot of people, when I go to certain places and say, "There's a leash attached to my dog," but they're not holding it. So, with the way things have changed in this world, you have to be direct. Which is why I added you physically have to be holding the leash.
Okay.
And then I added the six-foot length. That is in most every other community. Because once it's beyond six feet, it's really hard to control it.
Control.
If someone, if a kid's running past you, you're pulling that leash. And the longer the leash is, the longer it takes to get control. Because you could have the best behaved dog, but if you have something running directly across from that dog, most dogs are going to react. So, I added the length, physically holding the leash. And a lot of people on the trails are using the shock collars and electric beeping collars, saying they're in control. But the person's way down here at the bottom of Half Mile Hill, and the dog's way up there.
Not watching what's going on.
You're not in control.
Yeah.
The dog may get a little zap and go, "Ooh," and then keep going.
So, this will give you more tools for enforcement?
Yes.
Great.
Yeah, because we get a lot of complaints, especially in that little section of town.
Thank you so much, Brad. We really appreciate you coming tonight.
You're very welcome, thank you. Thanks.
We'll move on to new businesses. Is anyone here from Eversource? All right, so I'm going to table this until Evers, we have a representative from Eversource to come speak with us about it. We'll move on to Item B, which is a request from the North Andover Athletic Association for their road race. Is anyone here for that? This is an annual race. Does anyone have any questions about what was submitted?
Application's in order.
Then I'll take a motion.
I'll move that the Select Board approve the request from the North Andover Athletic Association for permission to use Osgood Street, Stevens Street, Grapevine Road, Pleasant Street, and Harkaway Road on October 12th, 2024, from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. for a 5K road race.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
We look forward to that race. The next item on our agenda is a request from the Festival Committee to hold the following events: sheepshearing, Fourth of July celebration, and the annual tree lighting. Is anyone here from, oh, there's Jeff. Come chat with us, Jeff. You were hiding behind the podium.
As always. Jeff Gogo, 695 Johnson Street. Request of the Festival Committee from the Board that we're able to hold sheepshearing on May 19th, Fourth of July celebration also. I don't know if we have to do that separately or if we're doing it all at once. All at once. Fourth of July celebration on the Fourth of July, and the annual tree lighting, which I think is December 4th or 2nd?
First.
First, thank you. It's the Sunday after the parade, et cetera, et cetera, so. Yeah, so, everything's coming together right now. And just to inform the Board that I believe our Fourth of July fireworks this year are going to be tentatively on the 6th of July, I believe. I'm not positive of that. We've been speaking with the firework company, and there were no openings because it's midweek. We could have either had it the Monday and Tuesday before the Fourth, or the following Saturday. And I thought the following Saturday would be more appropriate since it's really not non-workday when they were proposing having it. So, I thought it'd be better to push it off till the Saturday.
To extend the holiday.
There you go, there you go. So, I don't know if anybody has any questions about the event? I think most of you have been there in one way or another.
Yeah.
It's all coming together.
No, this is great. I'll take a motion.
I move that the Select Board approve the Festival Committee events at the common as presented.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for coming, Jeff.
Thank you.
All events that we look forward to. Okay, so we have to, with Dick not being on the Board anymore, we have to appoint somebody to be our representation for the Master Plan Implementation Committee.
So, that committee usually meets about once a month. Andrew is their liaison. They've got a great group. They're responsible for keeping the master implementation website. They've reviewed projects for us. I think Kelly served on them for a while. So, they're a good group and doing a lot of exciting things. So, we're looking forward to having one of you join them. Is there any interest?
I'd be happy to do it.
Thank you.
So, I move that the Select Board appoint Brian Roach to the Master Plan Implementation Committee.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, even before I change it is mine, really.
I just heard my wife say, "What?"
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Yes.
You're very welcome, Brian.
I will, I will.
And our next order of business is we need to elect a clerk, because, again, Dick was our clerk, so.
I was your type, man.
Yes, I was saying that, yes. Our newest member to take over. So, I'll take a motion.
I'll move that Dave Crest serve as the clerk of the Select Board.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Official.
I abstained, I abstained from that one.
Effectively, you have to start placing.
Effectively, yeah. If you can start taking notes. So, our next item is we have to reorg our Board and Committee liaison assignments.
Yes, so we have some that we've heard from. I don't have Janice's or Rosemary's, and that could just be because I missed them, maybe? Okay. You sent you on, okay, that might be, that's my bad, and I apologize. So, we'll go through.
That's okay.
And we'll figure it out. Laurie's looking now. Laurie had the gall to go on vacation.
I do have, I mean.
And so, we'll, all right, so for Affordable Housing Trust, the two people that I had who had signed up were Brian and Dave. The current person was Dick.
That was Dick.
Yes.
I'm also interested, but there are plenty of other things I am also interested in, so.
So, maybe what makes sense is I'll, we'll go through, we'll mark who's interested in what, and then we'll kind of dole out. And so, it's even, because that's always kind, what ends up happening is some one person ends up with all of, like, the heavy-hitting committees that meet often. So, for CPC, it's currently Janice. Brian had checked off he would be interested in doing that one. Janice, did you also have that as one? Rosemary?
I don't even remember what I said.
That's okay.
I think it's, I don't know, I responded to the original.
Okay. Rosemary, feel free to let me know, too. So, Conservation was Dick. Dave said he would be willing to do that one. Is there anybody else who's interested in that? Okay. Council on Aging is currently Janice. Janice, are you interested?
I still would like to do that.
Okay. The Commission on Ability Assistance was Dick. No one has signed up yet as being interested.
I'd do that. Happily do that.
It's a good one. All right, the Festival Committee was Rosemary. Rosemary, are you interested in continuing that?
Yeah.
Is anybody else also interested in that one?
It's because it ties in with the wreaths and stuff like that.
All yours.
The Board of Health, last year was Laura. Laura did not put that down as something she's interested in continuing to do. So, is there anyone else who's interested in being on the Board of, the liaisons of the Board of Health?
I'm interested.
The Historical Commission, last year was Rosemary. Library. It's the Historic Commission.
I'd do that if you're looking to.
We can always have shears, too, so that's fine. Library Trustees, last year was Janice. Janice, are you interested in continuing to do Library Trustees?
I will, but I don't need to, I have.
I considered that one.
Okay. Neighborhood.
I know some good people there.
There's a lot of nice people on that one. Neighborhood Conservation District, last year was Rosemary. The Old Center Historic District, both Brian and Dave had checked off that they were interested in it. And last year, it was Dick.
I was commenting here.
Rosemary, last year, you were the Patriotic Observance Committee?
I'll still do that.
Planning Board. Yeah, it's okay. Planning Board, I have, currently is Laura, and I have both Laura and Brian interested.
I'd be interested also, but.
Okay. Poet Laureate Committee, last year was Dick.
I'd do that.
Roses are red.
It's my favorite one. All right, Sustainability Committee, this year is Laura, Laura's still interested. School Committee, this year is Laura, Laura's still interested. These tend to go to the chair. The Finance Committee, last year was Laura, Laura's still interested. Youth and Rec Council, last year was Laura, Laura is still interested. Zoning, both David and Brian checked off. And Board of Assessors, last year was Rosemary.
Yeah, that's.
You like that one?
Yeah.
All right, so maybe what makes sense, then, is for me to, like, go back through these and kind of come up with a plan based on what everyone put they were interested in, and on the kind of amount of work that that liaison job might be, and we could put it on the next agenda and vote. Okay.
Because we'll all end up with four, right?
You will all end up with four, yeah.
Which is maybe five. Because for a while, we had like seven.
Even if you look at the sheet, most of us will put down five.
I think we were asked, we were asked to submit five.
Yeah.
And. I'm pretty agreeable to fill spots.
Me, too. Also, happy to do whatever needs to be done.
Yeah, okay. All right.
Bear in mind, I do now have the Master Plan Implementation Committee as well, so.
That's true. Yep. Julie's going, "What?" Okay, I will organize that, and then we'll get them on the next agenda. Thank you.
Thanks. So, we'll move on to our request from the Farmers Market to close First and the First Street. Is anyone, oh, Chris Allen's here.
Yeah, Chris Allen is here, Chris Allen. And I can say, five Beacon Hill Boulevard, that's the first time I've been to the same town here. It's very cool. And yeah, and this is our formal request, and I'll read it here, because I won't get the dates right, to close First Street from the CVS entrance and Main Street from 8:00 in the morning until 3:00 in the afternoon, every Sunday from June 16th through October 6th. So, it's a long time, it's a lot of Sundays. We're entering into our eighth year.
We'd love help.
We would, and along those lines, again, I give heartfelt, I love you so much to our, to our town manager for enabling town employees to volunteer at the market on a regular basis. The difference is just, it's hard to even express the difference it's made and how we've been able to function at the market. I mean, we have a great crew, and we all work very well together, and it's a very well-oiled machine. But to have grownups show up, really, and say, like, "Yeah, what do you want me to do?" And they're just like, they just do whatever you want. It's wonderful, it's wonderful. It's a lot of, it's a little bit of hard work for a short period of time, but it makes a huge difference in our day, so.
Dee can tell you, we're actually turning people away. That's how. Oh, really? Yes, so, it's, it's, yeah. It's very popular.
You might cut a Sunday off.
No, and we appreciate you trying to even it out in the weeks, too, because, you know, it's like you have seven people and then maybe one, you know, so that's great, that's very much appreciated. And let's see if there's any other big thing that I wanted to say. Again, it's our eighth year. I got to say that this year, the activity has been like pre-pandemic levels, which has just been marvelous. So, we started a little early, bringing in vendors, and we've filled up. We have a full market, like, now, which is just mind-blowing. And we seem to have a wide variety, you know, a little mix of crafters, but we really try hard to get a good mix of foods and prepared foods. And we've got food trucks and a couple of things, and a whole bunch of different groups that use our volunteer tend to, you know, make a little bit more money for themselves. So, that is also, and the other thing that I would very much like you to vote on and really help us with is good weather.
That's praying.
Do what you can. You know, sunny skies and happy customers is really what we're looking for. So, see what you can do. We're very much appreciated. You know, and anybody who wants to volunteer at any time to be on our Board, we're a great group of people, and we are looking to expand always, always, always. And that isn't always meaning every Sunday you have to show up. I mean, that is just the brains behind the whole deal, and a lot of that work is during the winter. But we have a great group, and we'd love to welcome anyone else who is interested in helping us with our pursuits in the Farmers Market. That's it. Thank you. Any questions?
No, it's just been wonderful to watch it grow and expand.
Yeah, it really has.
And the activity that it brings on Sunday mornings is amazing.
Yep, yep.
Do you ever get sales info from the vendors to kind of track how it's doing? I mean, you know, obviously.
We actually quiz our vendors on a regular basis. I mean, we walk around and we say, like, "Hey, how you doing today?" You know? And most vendors, you can tell when they're doing well or when they're not. And it'll ask, a lot has to do with the vendor themselves. But most of them really like the market very much. We get a really good feedback, and that's why they come back a time and time again. But it's a rough go for these folks, particularly since the pandemic.
But it's a rough go for these folks, particularly since the pandemic. I mean, a lot of people, they just, they couldn't, they couldn't continue what they were doing. And for the folks that actually are very successful, they end up with a brick and mortar somewhere, which is amazing, but then they just, they can't do the market. So you do get shifts for those reasons. And some people have to decide at some period of time if they want to do one market that's not ours. I mean, Haverhill has a great market. Andover has a great market. Not everybody can do all of the markets, so that. But short answer is yes. Is it formal? No. But yeah, we, we talk to people a lot to see what we're doing right and, you know.
We have vendors who beg us to do a winter market because they do so well, and we tell them.
Yes. A lot of requests like, oh, consider it a winter's market? We go.
June through October.
So anyway, that's it. If anybody has any questions or they want to, you know, come, come down to the headquarters tomorrow, we're gonna have a meeting.
Off and running.
Yes, off and running. Oh, thank you.
Yeah, I'll take, I'll take a motion.
I will. Sorry. Move the Select Board approved request from North Andover Farmers Market to close First Street between CVS entrance and Main Street from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM every Sunday from June 16th, 2024 through October 6th, 2024.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm gonna recuse myself from voting on this.
Four, one, okay. Excellent. Looking forward to that. A lot of good events on our agenda tonight. The next one, next item we have is a request from the Booster Club for softball batting cages, and Seeth Bedard is here to tell us about the, where you'd like to put them.
Very good. Thank you very much. Again, my name is Seeth Bedard. I am here to represent the North Andover Booster Club softball program. Each year, we request permission to erect two temporary batting cages at McAvoy Field. First one being closer to the Chadwick side between Fields Two and Three, which is, are the middle fields, and the field which is closest to Chadwick. We also request to put another temporary batting cage right on the opposite side, right behind the snack shack in Field Two, which is the field closest to Chadwick. If you'd like, I have a diagram here that. Outlines exactly where we would like to put them. We're seeking permission to erect these this weekend, April 20, April 25th, and with them coming down the weekend of August 15th.
And this is the location where they were last year?
Correct, yes.
The only thing, and Laurie had brought it up earlier, is that they're gonna start construction on McAvoy July 1st, so we may have to take them down July 1st.
We could certainly do that. I can.
We'll be in, yeah, we can be in touch.
Yes, we can, we can change that from August 15th to July 1st.
Okay.
And if it's longer, I can like, no, but as of right now, it's July 1st.
Certainly, yeah.
So should we change the date or no?
Change it to July 1st and then.
We can extend it.
I can just let them know.
Okay.
Perfect.
Yeah, that works. Yeah, and if, even if they're working in different areas and you can keep one up or whatever, we can make it.
That'd be great.
Make it work, yeah.
Fantastic.
And we got no complaints last year, right, with the batting cages or from neighbors or?
Nope, the neighbors are fine with us. Well, not only do the youth use it, the high school teams also utilize the cages as well. With being cognizant, the, we're off the fields by 7:00 PM at night, so there's never a situation where people are out there all hours of the night or early in the morning to disturb folks in the neighborhood. The earliest folks during vacations or summer times are able to get on the field is 10:00 AM.
Great. Any other questions? Comments?
It's all great.
Yeah, no, it's exciting.
Very good. Thank you.
I moved that the Select Board approved the request for, from the North Andover Booster Club to put up the batting cages at McAvoy Field from April 25th, 2024 until July 1st, 2024.
I have a motion and a second. Any other, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. So now it's our favorite, Melissa's favorite time, going through the warrant.
But I, I think maybe we should do NMJ first, because it's gonna, like, I think some of the discussion that we're gonna have is gonna impact some of the articles that we might vote on. So it may make sense just to flip them around and postpone my favorite part of the evening until later, till later.
Well, in that case then, I'll invite Dr. Gilligan and Dr. Millie up to present to us.
Good evening. My name's Greg Gilligan, and I'm the Superintendent of Schools. Thank you for having us here tonight, joined by Dr. Jim Millie, our Deputy Superintendent for Finance and Operations. First, I want to acknowledge, we appreciate getting on your agenda tonight, one, for the ARPA request, and two, to provide you with an update on the current fiscal year deficit. We also appreciate the collaborative efforts by Town Manager Rodriguez and her team to work with us to address this issue, and certainly know the timing is not great as it is late in the fiscal year. Unfortunately, we've encountered the perfect storm with unanticipated, unanticipated costs that are federally or mass DESE mandated. The recent spike in costs, particularly with increased special education and homelessness transportation expenses, coupled with unexpected movings at almost a million dollars for three students, and the 14% increase out of district schools increased a lot by the mass OSD with no state relief has indeed created a challenging situation, the likes I haven't seen in over a decade, but is something happening in many districts this spring across the Commonwealth. We've been working tirelessly to close this gap, and Dr. Millie and I, along with our team, have busy days ahead. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Millie to walk you through our current deficit.
Again, thank you for having us tonight. Want to talk about what has caused the deficit to begin with. There's two sides to this, the expense side and the salary side. On the expense side, as Dr. Gilligan said, it's a term that we've heard a lot over the years, perfect storm, and it's one that I've tried to avoid using, but this year has definitely been that case.
Sorry, it's just not showing up to the microphone to see if I can get it to you.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. Oh, it's not the wire.
No, it's a flat panel. All right, sorry, you're gonna have to.
So on the expense side, we've had some major hits. In district special education, transportation is up 271,000, and that's additional buses and vans and monitors for those vehicles. Our out-of-district transportation has seen a 40% increase from previous years, 545,000. Our homeless transportation is up 99,000 and continues to go up. We just had another one. It's hard to believe when you hear the numbers, but we just had another student that was declared a homeless resident of North Andover. It's $500 a day to transport that student. Out-of-district tuition, that's a couple of things. It's the OSD, it allowed a 14% increase in tuition, out-of-district tuitions, at the end of the year last year. So we knew coming in that we were taking a $700,000 hit. The state indicated it would try to help mitigate that, but they haven't done anything yet. We did file an application for what they call emergency relief from the circuit breaker funding. Our application was received and accepted, but we have no idea what that relief might be. But the, besides the OSD percentage increase, we've also seen some major student placements that were court decisions that they belong to North Andover. So it's 1.2 million in total over what we had anticipated. At the same time, like Chapter 70, we budget, we level fund circuit breaker from one year to the next, and we completely, we plan to completely use circuit breaker funds in each year. And it was 257,000 less than last year because of the previous year's claims. In ESSER funds, we had anticipated having 200,000 left over from the ESSER funding, but we ended up having to use that to close out last year. And repairs and maintenance, we've seen this trend over the last couple of years, coming out of COVID, inflation has an impact. So this is a combination of both things breaking down more and the cost to repair being much higher than they used to be. So you can see the, the expense side was 2.8 million dollars, or is so far. On the salary side, and I have to take responsibility for this, our budget, the way our budget works is we have to pay our bills, and we can carry a deficit on the salary side. And so we, we normally do, and then we use our offsets at the end of the year to, to make that up. But it became apparent after I brought forward the expense side of things that we had a deficit, that we were also experiencing a deficit on the salary side as well. So like I said, I would take responsibility for that. And the reasons for those, not much in our control here either, but daily subs and long-term subs is, is up 348,000. And just as an example, we counted today, we have 38 long-term subs through the year so far. And that's about double what we would normally have. And a long-term sub can cost us usually between 20 and 24,000, while, in addition to paying the, the person they're covering who's getting their, their sick pay or, or whatever it might be. Teaching assistance, that's a, a couple of things make that up. One is that we were hopeful going into the year that we were gonna be able to get back to COVID levels for teaching assistance. We've seen an increased need from our students, especially SEL needs, to, to have to deal with those. That hasn't happened. If anything, you know, we're seeing an increase in needs, and where we couldn't fill positions, we had to pay contracted services to provide those services, which costs us about twice as much as an individual would. The extra hours, again, the buildings have been managing the need of the students and doing so without getting extra staff when they haven't been able to. They've been bringing or having staff work extra hours in order to, to meet those needs. That's another 394,000. Another big one was column increases, 241,000. Normally in a year, our column increases are offset by our, what we call turnover savings, where teachers who retire or staff who retire are replaced by lower-paying individuals who are lower on the salary schedule, and those usually offset the column increases where somebody gets the next level and they move up a column. But we've seen a sharp increase in the ability and the ease with which to move from one column to the next, because online courses make it very easy to, to gain those credits that are necessary. We did address that in the contract with the union to minimize that and decrease the annual impact of that. One thing I want to make clear, the next item, it's, we had budgeted a 2.5% increase for teachers, and we negotiated for this year a 3%, so it's a half percent. So 223,183. The town manager had set aside, planned to set aside, 220,000 to cover that half percent, so that was already covered. So none of this, you know, the deficit that we're seeing, I've heard around that people are saying, oh, it's because of the teacher contract. It has nothing to do with the teacher contract. You can see all the other things it has to do with, but that's not one of them. And then the last item is actually, instead of having to go out and, and hire new staff to cover some openings that are created by people being out, we were able to plug those with some teachers who were willing to give up a prep and cover the class, and this is the extra money to do that. So you can see the salaries, 1.7 million. We do have offsets that occur every year. Not the first one, that one was coming out of, the town manager had indicated that she was going to use the closing out of the Special Education Stabilization Fund in order to help cover that increase. And so that one is not an annual one, that was for this year. The others are mostly annual, food service indirect costs and the community programs indirect costs. They use our buildings, and those programs are enterprise funds, so they pay for the use of the space. And these are the amounts that we charge to them for the use of that space and custodial coverage and things like that. Food service noon attendants, the food services department pays for the time that noon attendance spent covering lunch. They don't, they don't pay for the time covering recess, but they do pay for the time covering lunch. The journal entries that we do at the end of each year, preschool revolving account, the tuitions that come in for the preschool cover expenses like some salaries and custodial and some things like the utilities, things like that. So we'll finish the remaining tuitions that are coming in. We'll, we'll journal entry expenses to that. Same with the non-resident revolving account. Those are students that we have programs that other districts might not, so they send students to us, and then they pay for those students. So that's where the, that money comes from, and it will pay for operating expenses associated with that. Nursing grants, we will have some expenses that we can charge to the nursing grant. There are some expenses that qualify for the capital account. We have the exterior maintenance of our schools. We'll journal entry those. There's a 240 grant for special education that still has 253,000 unattributed, and that will go to, we'll journal entry expenses to that. And then the journal entry to literacy grant of 11,000. There's obviously a purchasing freeze. We're closing out POs. We anticipate that closing out of POs to generate 200,000. So the total offsets are almost 1.5 million. So in total, we have 2.8 million in expenses, 1.7 in salaries, offsets of 1.5, and a total deficit of 3.122. There is, in working with the town manager and Lynn Savage and Kyle Warren and Dr. Gilligan, we've identified some, some ways to meet this deficit. One is that annually, for the next 10 years and starting hopefully this year, the Amazon is contributing 300,000 to schools for curriculum materials and such. The request that you have before you tonight for 380,000, that's a request that we were going to put in earlier, but then there was a pretty large project that it looked like it was going to use up all the ARPA funds. But then that project was approved and some money came back that was available for ARPA. So we've got that application in tonight for curriculum materials and PD to address continuing impacts from COVID. The Finance Committee Reserve will be requesting that on Wednesday night of 1.5 million. The Special Education Stabilization Fund that I referred to earlier, which was gonna contribute 220 this year, and then 230 and 250 maybe in the, the third year, we would ask to have that come all out for this year to cover, understanding that we would have to account for that in the second and third year. And then additional, according to the town manager and Lynn, additional municipal surpluses and reductions of 126, 179,000. Additional school department reductions of 106,000 would, would cover the existing deficit. So key points, we could not realistically impact Medicaid increases in expenses. Certainly could have done a better job of identifying the salary expenses, and I take full responsibility for that. You know, as Dr. Gilligan said, these are things that a lot of towns are dealing with right now. We're hearing every day another one coming forward with a similar situation. The big question is, I guess it's the next point, could it be communicated there would be a deficit? Did do that. I could have done a better job of the extent once I, I realized the full extent of it. My dilemma was that I wanted to make sure I had the right number. I didn't want to come back to the well again and, and give a number and then have it be more than that after the fact. So that's what I was struggling with, was trying to get the number right and then come forward. Certainly should have come forward right away. I will say that the town manager and staff have been tremendous in helping, and it, it certainly proved to me that having more eyes looking at things and trying to solve the problem were much better. Completely agree with the recommendation. I saw the town manager's letter. It captured the situation very well. Completely agree with the recommendation is do monthly reviews of school department budget with the town manager going forward. The school committee chair thought that he should be part of, or whoever the chair is, should be part of that discussion. I agree with that as well. And obviously, being a deficit in this year, that means we've got to look at next year, and what impact does it have on the budget? And so we have begun that process of identifying necessary changes with the plan to bring a plan to the school committee on May 9th of what that will look like. And then lastly, town manager just wanted me to identify that there is a reallocation of funds as a result of all this. Rather than fund the August 8th storm deficit from within the general funders plan prior to learning of the deficit, they are gonna transfer 456 from free cash, 456,000, from free cash to cover the flood deficit, which was generated 252,000 from the town and 203 from the school. And we're ready to answer any questions.
My first question is. Go ahead, were you going to speak?
I was going to, yeah.
Okay, I couldn't help but.
No, I just, I just wanted to say a couple of things. I mean, this is extremely frustrating that we've got 3.2 million in deficit. It doesn't happen over. It doesn't happen overnight, clearly, and the fact that we're just hearing about it now is also frustrating. We've had, obviously, you've had, done a lot of work in the past week. Thank goodness for Lynn and Kyle and Melissa and the staff to get to the point where we can work within our capacity. If we had to borrow this money, it would be detrimental to the plans that we've put into place with Facilities Master Plan 2, with the fields. It would kill our bond rating and I think everybody knows that. And we wouldn't be able to do what we've planned to do with the building. And we're talking about 6% of your budget that we're over here and it's staggering to me. We are cutting 10% on this town side. I mean, that's going to impact public safety, DPW. I mean, we hear about the roads and the sidewalks all the time and now we need to make cuts there. And, you know, the chiefs are working to figure out where they can cut. You know, it's not, it, the ripple effect that this is going to have on the town is significant. We, I feel that this board has been extremely supportive of the schools and we've got, we have, Melissa has heard from us time and time again how important the schools are. And I think that that's representative of that we've gotten 10 million dollars increases over the past four years. You've seen 5% increases when the town's seen 2% increases. You know, we've got the middle school under construction. We've got Kittredge coming. The fields, the design for the high school fields is in the budget this year. So I feel like we've been very supportive of the schools. And at the end of the day, it's your fiduciary responsibility to work within the budget. And I just, I don't know how we got to 3.42 million in a deficit. So I I know that the board has a lot of questions and comments, but, and I'll open it up to them, but I just wanted to touch on a few things before we did that.
You mentioned that some of the deficits that, and maybe I misunderstood, were coming from the state's side. Was it any forewarning from the rising costs or did I misunderstand the comment?
You know, you didn't misunderstand. So OSD is a state agency. They approved a 14% increase to private schools that provide out of district placements for us. And that impact was known at the end of the year after the budget had already been passed. And so we we knew and we claimed, we stated in public that that was a, up to a $700,000 hit. So we knew that going in. And then the other, you know, when we have students that come in, that was the purpose of the Special Education Stabilization Fund to account for unanticipated expenses, but we've had more this year on top of everything else that's going on than we've seen. So we're, you know, more than 1.2 million right there.
So how?
Close.
Almost 2 million, just there.
Really, 4 and 1/2.
On the 700,000 you just referenced for OSD, you said it was identified at the beginning of the year. But when was it publicly brought to the school committee? Was it prior to the February 1 meeting?
Yeah, we've been, we mentioned it before the school year was even out last year. That, and what had happened was the state had indicated, they understood the impact of this and they were going to try to see what they could do to help mitigate that with towns. So you expected, oh, maybe they're going to increase circuit breaker. I think that's what a lot of people thought. But it didn't happen. What they did do, there's something called extraordinary relief, which is something that you get the following year if you exceed claims by 25% from the previous year. But this year, they did establish something called emergency relief, which, like I said, we qualify for, but we don't know if they're going to have the funding to to give that out to towns who did qualify. And we don't know what, how much it would be.
The one thing that that's happened for years and years and years is especially with, you know, families moving into district and God bless them, I'm not saying anything that, you know, depending on the circumstances, we have to pick that up. Sometimes it's the school before, but whatever the circumstances are. And we've always appealed to the state for more help, that they're not, they automatically come as unplanned expenses for the town. And again, nobody is holding that against the family that's moving to our great town. But the state needs to do more. You just can't drop these huge, these bills are tremendous.
You know, I'm not sure that the state realized the impact on folks who, you know, who had no housing, the crisis that the state has faced. And there's a lot of districts who are housing students, you know, between, I don't know, I know like Uber might have, might have 250 to 300 students and they're only receiving about 104 dollars a day just for, towards the school per student, but the cost is certainly more. But I think there's been a cost in the state. I think they thought they could do more last spring than they could, than has actually happened in the cost.
But having said that, they still have a pretty tremendous budget. They have a lot of money. They need to, they need to rethink some of these things. You can't just drop a bill like this on a community and as Laura said, you know, there's jeopardy against our bond rating that we've worked decades for to get it where it is. They really, they need to, they're everybody's kids, not just the town that they landed. And the state needs to realize that.
You know, I think we've seen certainly an increase that's almost probably doubled in the last couple of years of homeless students. And so that's a federal, it's a federal act called the McKenney-Vento Act. And, you know, so if folks are evicted here in North Andover, they're in our schools, you know, I wouldn't single anyone out, but most recently we've had someone that's probably 45 minutes away. You know, oftentimes we'll work with the families and think about like, okay, does it make more sense to go to that school in which you're residing now, depending on the situation? But, you know.
Do you get reimbursed for those, the busing costs? You don't get any reimbursement for homeless busing?
You have to, you have to have 3% of your students qualify as homeless in order to be approved for that.
So in a typical year, how many, so give me the number, say, for the last three or four years and then this year, like what's the difference this year? Like, how many homeless students do we have in 2021, 2, and 3?
So it's not necessarily them being homeless that's the increase, it's the transportation. So who requires the transportation? And depending on that situation. So, you know, there are some folks whose family might drive and we have to pay the IRS mileage tax rate. We have other folks, you know, that don't need to get, they don't need for us to get them to school. They have the ability to get the kids to school. So like the, one of our most recent, like it's $500 a day to transport one student.
So the last four, the last four years.
One student.
The last four years, including this year, 3, 7, 10, and 20 this year.
Okay, thank you. But you could, but $500 a day, I mean, you could probably Uber a kid anywhere in the state for less than that.
Right. So, so, so we do that, you know, we try to finagle as much as we can to say, we do have some parents who are paying the Uber and then getting reimbursed for that and it's a lot cheaper for us than having to pay a company to do it. So where we can do that, we do.
All right. So the $500.
But there's no limits from the state that like, there's no limits on like transportation costs? I mean, that's.
No, we haven't bid out and, you know, we don't get a lot of bids and then we have to take, you know, what we get.
The $500, I'm sure I'm clear. That, I, when I read it on the presentation, I thought you were stating that's the average cost.
No, no, no.
That's one student, it's an outlier. It's not typical.
Well, Jim could tell you about the transportation. I mean, transportation costs are a lot. And when you talk about Uber and some of those other creative solutions, like there are all sorts of legal and liability issues around that. So it depends on the age of the student. It depends on whether we can work with the families, but we've certainly done that. But even a transport from, you know, someone who's homeless that might live in a hotel in Salem, New Hampshire or.
Pittsburgh.
But I'm saying even locally, Jim, that's 250 a day.
Yeah. So.
So we have 20 students right now who are homeless.
Considered, yes.
And being sent back to wherever it is that they were.
Wherever they are staying, yes.
Right, wherever they're staying.
Yep.
And they, they live here and go to school elsewhere or they live elsewhere and go to school.
They live elsewhere and go to school here.
Right.
They're assigned to North Andover.
But not permanently a resident, wherever that is.
But they're not migrants, they're just residents who.
They're residents, yes, correct.
Yeah. You need to declare, like.
With the rising cost of rent, it's pretty easy that that could happen, you know, when you're looking at a three bedroom for $3,400 a month plus.
So just to go back, your question, that was on there just to highlight how it just is changing every day or it's, you know, we're getting impacted every day. We just got that $500 student.
And you don't get any money back at all from the state department?
No, correct.
What about the New Hampshire?
Yeah, the one question I I'm not sure about is if it impacts our Chapter 70 because they have us report it. And so I'm not sure if they adjusted the formula to account, but they, and maybe they're planning to, but they do have us report it.
So as an elected official, I'll strive to maintain my professionalism, but as I sit here as a homeowner and a resident and a parent and a taxpayer, I'm so upset about this unprecedented and unacceptable failure of leadership and left with so many questions about how we got here. Our community has worked so diligently for so many years to put our town in the best possible financial pathway and it feels completely like that hard work has been tossed aside by an administration who is supposed to be a partner in government with us. We will move forward. If gas disasters and pandemics and unexpected microbursts have shown us anything, it is that North Andover has some serious grit. But just as we held Columbia Gas accountable, there needs to be some accountability here. I just don't, cannot wrap my brain around the fact that you can get to be almost $5 million over your budget and not know it until April. You're taking an awful lot of blame for this, Dr. Mealy, but can you explain to me sort of how one individual can cause such a huge problem to a community? I just feel like there have, what are the checks and balances that were in place for this, to avoid this from happening? And where did they go wrong? Like there have to, you're not a one man show. So what are the checks and balances that exist and how did we go so wrong?
So with all due respect, if it's a lack of leadership, it's mine. It certainly is. It's, I'm the same person, I, this is my 15th year. Never had a problem projecting in all my 15 years until this year. There have been some very good things that have happened over those 15 years. We have a, we participated in a TOPS program with North, with Andover that for the last 11 or 12 years saves us a million dollars a year. I was responsible for that. We have free full day kindergarten that not only saves our parents' tuition, but saves the town or adds $400,000 a year for the last 11 years. So there have been some good things.
Absolutely.
This year, as I said, there are a lot, most of those expenses are things beyond our control. What I take full responsibility for is that I struggled to, one, believe it myself and try to figure out exactly where is this, how is this going so wrong? And I did communicate that there was going to be a significant deficit, but it just kept getting worse. And like I said, I wanted to make sure I had that number correct and not have to go to the well again because that would be even worse. And so I take full responsibility. I I do and I and I should.
But, so the question is, what, what was in place, what checks and balances are in place to keep this from happening along those?
Right. And so, so the, the normal checks and balances are that we do a budget status report. And traditionally, we do one, after the year kind of gets settled into starting. So usually late October, early November, we do a budget status report. At that time, we did one November 16th. I indicated that we are seeing some pressure points from the same areas you've seen in this presentation that's, that's causing not only the OSD increase, but other areas as well. And then normally, we would do the next one during, as the budget kind of month was wrapping up. So late January, early February, we did one on February 1st, which is when I brought forward that at least on the expense side, we're looking at 1.4, 1.5, somewhere in there deficit. And then it became apparent, you know, not too long after that, we also have a problem on the salary side. And started having conversations and have been working on the solution. And normally, we would be bringing a budget status report to the school committee in April. We were certainly planning on bringing that forward. And so the process wasn't different, but it's obviously given, you know, it became obvious that we need to do that much more frequently. And like I said, the more eyes on it, the better. So I certainly welcome the town manager's recommendation that we do a monthly review going forward.
Kind of to build off of that question, yes, how did we get to not knowing that we needed 16 TAs that were unbudgeted for?
So before COVID, we had a certain number of TAs and we haven't had more students. We do have, we are seeing more student needs associated with what teaching assistants provide. But I, I was confident going into this year that we were going to be able to get back to COVID, non, you know, before COVID levels. And the student needs just didn't allow that. And we even saw where we had to contract out for some needs. So again, you know, my responsibility for thinking that we were past that recovery point.
But when you knew they weren't in the budget, what then? We, you have a set amount for the budget, correct? And so you knew, you hoped in the beginning of the year that they wouldn't be needed. When you were discovering that they were needed, the money needed to come from somewhere. So what was the plan at that point?
So normally, we have those offsets of, you know, 1.3 is, is the average that would cover, you know, any one of these things that those offsets would cover because we experienced something every year. But then when you, when they all happen at the same time, you just don't have that ability.
How did you discover this? You know, and on February 1st, you told the school committee that it was 1.5 million and that was the projection for the end of the fiscal year. Okay. How did this, how did, how was this deficit discovered that's closer to $5 million? Like.
Well, when you say 5 million, I mean, we always have the offsets.
Okay, 3 and 1/2.
Three, right, 3.2. So it was brought to my attention by Lynn Savage that your deficit, your deficit in your salaries is larger than it normally is. And then that's when I said, I got to dig into this and realize what it was.
So when the, the 1.5 million is, I think, eye opening enough that was presented at the February 1 meeting. And when you presented that, you said FYI, no action taken. And I guess my question, Superintendent Gilligan, what actions did you take or did directives did you put in place to make sure that that didn't get any worse?
Yeah, so we, we put on a budget freeze probably right around that time, Jim. I don't know the exact date. And, you know, typically, we, we were concerned at that time, but typically with the offsets, we can, we can get there.
But don't you have an idea how much you had for offsets? Right, like, so you know from really an early point in the year maybe, like, or year over year, what you generally have for offsets, right? That probably doesn't change too, too much or do some years you have?
No, it doesn't. It does, like I said earlier, the 220 coming from the stabilization fund was the only one that's not, not normal. So about 1.3.
But you, and then we're monitoring the expenses and seeing, keep saying, well, we thought we'd have offsets, well, we thought we'd have offsets, well, at what point do you realize this is much bigger than the offsets we're going to have? It took Lynn bringing it to your attention?
So it wasn't until you figured out the salary deficit?
Correct.
Okay, correct. I guess it kind of echoes some of the, the statements that, that have been made earlier. I mean, I view this process as kind of having three phases right now. The first one is, let's fix it, right? Let's get to the end of the year, which, you know, thank you to Melissa, Lynn, and Kyle and helping us to develop a plan that can hopefully get us through there by the end of this week. Second phase is understanding exactly what happened, right? And really getting into it to make sure that we can't end up in this situation. situation again. And I think that, that was, leads us to, to phase three, which is implementing changes, you know, going forward, so we don't end up in this situation. We have, as, as Ben said before, we have a lot of initiatives we're trying to, to make townwide right now. We're going before town meeting to ask for a tremendous amount of money for the middle school fields. We're in full on pothole season. Every resident is wondering where every dollar is being spent, and this makes that incredibly challenging. So in that, in that vein, I want to talk about budgeting overall. So Superintendent Gilligan, what is, can you maybe kind of explain for us your budgeting process in terms of how you get to what your number is, you know, compared to previous years and whatnot? Can you take us through that a little bit?
Yeah, so we, we have, particularly in the last three years, we've seen, we've had bigger increases in the budget. You know, typically for us, most years, we haven't had money for the budget season. If we got a 3.5% increase, 3% would typically be level services of what we had. You know, say you had a few years back, 1% on 50 million, you know, it would be, right, what, 200, you know, a half percent would be 250,000 for new initiatives. So we, we certainly face some challenges. But we do work with the leadership team, the principals. They work with their school councils to identify needs. And then we, we come up with, you know, a list of things that we have to do. And it is things that are part of our long-term staffing plan, part of our strategic plan. And we present a superintendent's recommended budget based on all that information to the school committee, and we have a public hearing. Then the school committee votes to adopt a budget, and then it works its way through.
Do you compare it all with prior year's actual spending? Because when I looked at the FY budget for '25 for this year, I think there were 67 or so line items, and 58 of them were identical to what was budgeted for '24.
Yep. So I was gonna say, it's very similar to the process that town uses. We participate in a revenue and fixed cost committee, and you project based on what you know or what you might assume for the following year. And a lot of lines have been the same from one year to the next. So like,
How is that possible with inflation?
Alec, what's that?
With, just within general inflation, how is that possible?
Yeah, the challenge is that you know salaries are going up, whatever the contract stipulates. You've got to anticipate for some items like contracted services that there's going to be maybe 3%. Now, that's, you know, been higher the last couple of years. And then allocations to the schools are generally the same because you don't have any money left to increase those lines. So they're going to have less spending power than they have in the previous years. And then at some point, you finally address that and get, and kind of catch them up in a year when it's possible. But we have the same process. We have contracts that we know how much the increase is going to be, and we also have some items like materials and supplies or contracted services that we have to put a percentage increase based on what we think they're going to go up.
Dr. Gilligan, what is the process for warning the school committee, the town manager, whomever, about cost overruns? Like, who decides at what point to report this information? I mean, I would assume it's you, because you were, so how do you make that decision? And, yeah, what was the process this year? I mean, have you talked about it with them since February 1st?
Well, we certainly, we've been talking about the deficit that we projected for February 1st. You know, I think as Dr. Mealy has indicated, we've been really trying to get a hold of, you know, what the actual was with the, with the salary piece, factoring in the, some of the transportation increases, some of the others. Some, you know, we knew quite a few of these for February 1st. And then putting it all together, you know, I think that we've been, we've been working on it for a couple of weeks, but came up with this final number last week.
And whose decision is it? Like, when to report, or Dr. Gilligan, whose decision is it about when to report to the school committee and what to report to the school committee?
So, so he reported as soon as I informed him. Like I said, you know, I've been doing this, it's my 15th year, a few different superintendents. The process has always been the same. I am the one that is responsible for the budget and have informed the superintendent, whatever that number is going to be. I have been saying it's a, you know, a good size deficit. Here are the reasons. We're going to have to figure out how to address it, and it just keeps getting worse. And I was saying, it's, it's going to be worse, it's going to be worse. Let me get that number. And then, once I finally had the number, it became obvious to everybody.
But we are a team. We're, so we are a team. I am the superintendent, you know, and we, we, this is, I, I haven't seen, we haven't seen anything like this. We obviously hate that it's this time of the year.
I'm just surprised that it didn't red flag you prior to this, like?
It's been, trust me, I haven't gotten much sleep in the last few months.
I'm sure you haven't. I appreciate that.
Nobody is more, you know, disappointed in me than me. I, you know, I take a lot of pride in, in my work over the years and, and my contributions to North Andover. And so no one's more disappointed than me. And it's been on my mind 100% of the time for the last few months, trying to see, all right, where can we mitigate this? You know, can I get this number down before bringing it forward? I, I want to bring the right number. So that was the kind of, what was going on. And I know I should have brought it sooner because I was trying to be the one that was going to solve the problem and bring forward the answer for it. And it just, it got away from me.
The implications for this are incredibly far reaching, right? Or especially over onto the town side. So I'm hoping that, just to put this in sort of real terms for people, Town Manager Rodriguez, can you explain a little bit about what, what the known impacts are to the town side? You know, there is a memo floating around, but I think it's really helpful for people to hear, like, in real terms. You know, 10% of the remaining budget for each of our town departments doesn't mean a lot, but when you say, you know, that means we're doing less roadwork, or we're doing, you know, just, I know it is not a perfect system yet. Your department has, have not been aware for all that long, so you may not have, very specifically, but can you just let me know a little bit about what you expect to see happen on the town side?
Yeah, so we have kind of a, we have three budget initiatives right now on the town side to help with the deficit. So the first one is that we have a hiring freeze on. So we have a number of vacant positions. One's a patrolman, a 911 dispatcher, somebody at the youth center, and then two administrative assistants on the first floor, as well as a couple of DBW employees. And so basically, any offers we're making right now, we're making for July 1st. So we'll, we'll build a little bit of capacity in our budget just by doing that. And so that's kind of the first step. The second step is that we have a spending freeze on. So we've asked all of our town departments, if it's not contractual or an emergency, please don't buy it until we have a little more information about where we're going to be, right? And so, does that mean that Chief Gray can't buy his new guns that have the red light on them that he really wants? I don't know yet, right? But what I've said to him basically is, go ahead and get the contract ready, and if the funds are available at the end of the year, we'll do it. And if not, then we're going to have to kick it down the road a little bit. And then when it comes to the $179,000, that's the 10% cut from all of the departments. So it really fluctuates. So like, for instance, some people have a small budget. So like, the town moderator, he only loses $35. So I think he'll be okay. But there's other departments that certainly it's more impactful. So for instance, DPW is probably the most impacted employees. They have to cut $92,085 from their budget.
And they already operate on it. They're already low.
Yes. So we'll be postponing some routine maintenance. We have to postpone some tree removal and chipping. And then we will be limiting our ability for the rest of the year to pick up, like, anything that's been dumped on the side of the road. So those are the big things there. Police is going to be postponing some training. The fire has to cut seven, the police is 99, 31. Fire, 7,600, they're postponing fire alarm repairs until next year. So the treasurer's office is postponing munish training. This is probably really boring for people who are not insider baseball here, but we,
Don't build a line.
Yeah, the library, we're not going to purchase some books, about $3,000 worth of books. We're deferring some HVAC maintenance. A lot of it, much to Dee's dismay, is conferences, that kind of thing. So, but yeah, so.
We're team players, right?
Yeah, so it's about 10%. That 10% is $179,809.12. So those are kind of the three internal budget measures, measures that we're taking, on top of the other ways that we're working collaboratively with the schools that are outlined in the memo.
Thank you.
And for us to use all of the special ed stabilization, we have to suspend our policies, correct?
Right. So our, our policy, so maybe I'll start from the beginning. When we forecasted our budget, and we forecasted moving forward, we forecasted using the special ed stabilization account over a three-year period. And I know you've all heard me say that I'm not a fan of the special ed stabilization account, because I think that if we are overspending in special ed, we should really reuse a recurring revenue source to, to deal with that. And that's really a more appropriate use of the finance committee reserve. So I had been proponent of kind of phasing that out anyway. We had used it as kind of a creative funding source to make up that 0.5% budget increase for the teachers' contract. And the plan was to do that over a three-year period. We will be required now to do that over a one-year period. Your policy, the reason you need to suspend your policy, is that your policy allows the school to withdraw either 250 or 100, depending on the year. And it requires us to keep a certain amount in that account. We will not be doing either of those things. I think the current balance right now is about 790. So we'll leave a small amount of money in there.
To keep it active.
So we're basically escalating our plan in some ways, but it will require additional cuts on the school side, which we have discussed at length for fiscal year '25.
Our neighbor to the south is doing the same thing.
Mm-hmm.
Different reasons.
Yeah, same.
Different reasons.
Different reasons, yes.
Yes.
It might, maybe, it might be too early to say, Melissa, but is there a plan to refund the FinCon reserve or rebuild it?
So every year, we appropriate 1.5 million in the FinCon reserve. So there won't be like a repayment, oh, Chief Lee, it looks like he's in a rush. It always makes me nervous. There, there isn't really, we don't really replenish it. Sometimes we do. So let me say, sometimes we do. Like, so for instance, as a for instance, we used $100,000 last year to pay for the furniture for the new senior center. And we pledged that we would replenish that, right? Because we knew we'd be getting that money from Amazon. So that $100,000 will basically go back, but it will just go into free cash. But if we use that account for snow and ice, or we use that account for special ed, like, last year, we did use a small amount of it. I want to say it was like 200,000 for our special ed application came in. Was it more?
Yeah, that one is a good example, not to stop the momentum, but they told us.
Because you were enjoying it so much.
I was, I was. I was, I was enjoying the reprieve, yes. The, they had a case last year that they said, you cannot lose this case, but you have to pay for this student's placement of $200,000. So we had to go to FinCon at the end of the year. And then we found out this year, not only did we not get the money back, but we lost the case, and now we own that student for however many years.
Until they graduate?
Until they graduate.
Yep.
Yep.
In fact, I was on a, I was on a webinar a couple of weeks ago, and they said, this is a case, I can't believe North Andover's lost, but we're going to review it. The decision, which is final, there's no more appeal. We appealed to DESE. You know, they said the case in North Andover. And I said, just by the way, I'm from North Andover, Superintendent here.
So, so when we take that, say that, that $200,000 cost, right now, do we then build that into the budget for future years for that student?
Once we know of it, yes. Yep. Yep. So for instance, next year, we have a much bigger number in for out of district tuitions.
So we don't pay back? But I guess that's, we don't pay it back. What happens is, if there's excess in it, it goes to free cash for the following year, and we continue to fund that at 1.5%. We've had the finance committee reserve, look at Donovan, it's going to be three or four years now? Four years? Lynn says four. It's my favorite, because I think it's a very transparent process, and it also just has funds available for emergencies, which we seem to have our fair share of. So we continue to fund it, and we budget it again next year at 1.5%.
I think we'd be, okay.
You were about when I said, our neighbor to the south, that they, but that was built into the, what the negotiation decision that there would be layoffs? Is that why you were going to say something like that? That's okay.
Irrelevant to?
I don't think so.
No, it's not that it's irrelevant. He was about to say something, the difference, which, which we clearly know. They, they, that was a decision. This was just a lot of things coming together that didn't go our way.
Correct, correct.
With regard to the ESSR funds, where you mentioned, I mean, they're, I guess a smaller amount in the grand scheme of things, but I think they're more of a symptom of an overall issue here. When were those ESSR funds expended in fiscal year '23?
Twenty-two.
At the end of the year to settle accounts?
In '23. And we, we had anticipated, so it was quite a bit in ESSR funding that we received. And we used the bulk of it as we were experiencing the 5.5% increases to our budgets. That's how we were going to transition from recovery money that came from the town and ESSR money. And we, we, at the beginning of that year, we had probably $2.5 million, and we thought, okay, we're only going to need 2.3, and we're going to have $200,000 left at the end of the year. But then we had some other special education student decisions. And so we ended up having to use that $200,000 to close out last year. And we were anticipating, when we built the budget, that we would have that 200 for this year.
Were they allowed to be used this year? Like, didn't they?
Yes.
Okay, this was the last?
Yeah, so they're, they're going to be used this year anyway. But again, I kind of get back to the point, it's similar to, I guess, to the teacher's assistance of, when you knew at that point the money was gone, don't you then have to go look at the budget somewhere and say, we got to take out $200,000?
It's, yeah, I, you know, we look for ways every year, and we, we find savings during the course of the year. But we just lost that battle, and, you know, you, you see what happened.
Does that, I mean, Dr. Gilligan, do you think we accurately portray the buckets of money that we're spending? Like, if what we're doing is robbing Peter to pay Paul, do you think we are doing a good job, a good enough, I don't, you know,
Yeah.
of predicting where we're spending our money?
I, I think one of the challenges is every year, I mean, special education's a big pressure point, and that's the education that these students deserve. And, you know, I, I think one of the challenges is as IEPs come up, and there are different needs, and we have different folks, you know, like, some might have a hard time, but it's like, we have three students that, particularly, they weren't even from in-state where there's some relief from the other district, out of state at almost $1 million. You know, that is really uncommon to happen. You know, so I think one of the things that we do is we look at what was, you know, spent in special education. I think that the pandemic exacerbated special education. You see increased referrals. We, we've seen an increased number. You know, we used to hover around between 13 and 15% of our population is special, receiving special education services. We're now at 20.7, I think. So we've seen an increase, an increase in needs, you know, and it's, it's, it can be, it can be challenging.
That's just students on IEPs, right? That doesn't include 504s?
No, that doesn't include 504s.
That's just IEPs.
Just IEPs. Yeah. And, and you know, so we've seen that increase, but that's a trend that everyone has seen statewide.
A school department has a lot of pressure points in its budget. And so I've seen over the years, many different things from having to add another bus, or tuitions for students we hadn't anticipated, or a rash of, you know, boilers going and having to do those repairs, to all kinds of other things, utility costs. You know, it was a really cold winter, and so your heating fuel bills were much more than you anticipated, and the electric because of that. So, and, and we've always been able to kind of offset those. And this year was just, it was like everything at the same time hit us.
So based on what we talked about earlier, about your budget process and all of that, I am understanding that you guys need to cut quite a bit from next year's budget. I think it's fair that certainly the school committee and, and even the public deserve to know and have time to comment on when those cuts will be. know and have time to comment on when those cuts will be. I saw, I think that you were not going to present that until May
Ninth.
So that's like four, that's like five days before town meeting where this amended budget will be voted on. I think it's important that you can't, you can't wait that long to make sure people understand. We can't slide it through without people having time to digest what these, what the implications of this are. So, you know, I'm hopeful that Thursday's school committee meeting, you'll be able to give them a really good idea. I know it won't be perfect, but, you know, it's not a lot of time for that. But I'm hoping, you know, because we'll be watching also, that we'll be able, you'll be able to give them a really good, solid idea, not just a thousand-yard overview of where the money is going to be cut for next year. I think it's just, we need time to digest that and absorb it and talk about it and figure it out.
Yep. Yeah, I certainly appreciate that comment. You know, again, it was one of those where if you give me that amount of time, then I can have the exact budget. We can certainly have a very good idea by the 25th, by Thursday, of what that's going to look like, and then kind of finalize it, fine-tune it for the ninth, so that it's, you know, been done. So I do appreciate that comment.
I don't know if I have much more right now.
I mean, again, you guys are coming to us for our money that could have been spent elsewhere. You're coming to FinCon for their money. And, like, you know, I get it. I just, and I think that the month of reporting is important. I think that the process needs to be looked at. We can't be here again.
Agreed.
Can I ask you something with the month of reporting? That we can also get monthly burn rates for prior years as well? Because I think just in one month, out of context, may be really hard to, for us to grasp.
That's a good point. This, you know, you may see a line item that says, you know, you've spent 87% of it already in September. Well, that's because it may be
Right. Assume your burn rate's not linear, right?
Certain things get paid early.
Certain things are paid early. We certainly have that in our budget.
Buying books or computers.
Right. So that'd be really helpful for context as we're evaluating, are we on track?
Yeah, that makes sense. I think we can sit down and look at the format that Lynn uses for our quarterly updates, and then move it to kind of a monthly format for you. So we're just putting everything the same way.
I think it would be good for consistency.
Yeah.
And I guess just as a comment, as someone who's not as skilled at reading, you know, school budgets as, you know, certainly as a lot of other folks in this room are, I would probably recommend that the budget closely reflect actual expenses of prior years, so that it's very clear that it can be tied back to those, to that process. I mean, I've done a lot of budgeting elsewhere, and that's always the process that I've followed. So, I mean, I know you guys have somewhat unfettered ability to move amongst accounts as, and be flexible, which is great. And I think that, you know, the department's required to do that as things change throughout the year. But being able to look at trends over years of where things are being spent and make sure the budget reflects that, I think is critical for all of us to help understand it, and certainly all the taxpayers who are, again, looking at a head-scratching number right now.
One final thought is that, I mean, we use ClearGov, right? And it's, and I know you guys aren't obligated to do that, but I think it is, I know there's a school version, and it is an incredibly helpful tool for the taxpayers to be able to follow along with where their money is going.
I think it would help with transparency and earn some trust.
May I ask, maybe you have it up here somewhere, but what, the rising, the rising fuel costs and things like that, what percentage would you say that that has risen or?
So rising fuel costs? No, we're actually prob, we're finishing below, it was a warm winter. So heating fuel
I know, you said cold.
No, no, no. I was giving an example in past years.
Okay.
You know, you're susceptible, if it's a cold year, all of a sudden, that wasn't enough as it, as it had been the year before. But that wasn't the case this year.
Okay, so there was no cost beyond our control in, well, there were costs beyond our control. It was state imposed.
But not in heating.
But not in heating, not in, what about transportation?
Transportation, definitely. We saw a large increase in out-of-district special education transportation, in-district special education transportation. We actually were able to cut a bus a couple of months ago on in-district regular transportation. But yeah, transportation was, was up. Homelessness, we count that as transportation as well.
Overall, our enrollment is declining. Declining?
It is.
Well, I wouldn't say it's declining. It's, it's up a little bit, but it was, it is, like, it has been down.
The trend has been, right. We saw a little bit of an uptick, but the trend has been, and not just here, actually, across the state.
Flat. I'd say flat.
Okay.
Yeah.
Birth rates are low.
Yeah, they've been down. Yep.
Laura, do we have this presentation in our packet?
It's not.
No.
Okay. We can share it.
I'll share it with Laura. Yeah.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Can it be, can it be emailed to us? Did it come by email?
Any other questions?
I guess we, if we're going to go to a vote in ARP, I mean, one other question I had is, do you know the amount that we've funded reimbursed flood victims so far with the ARPa funds? Because this will now not be available for that program anymore.
We already allocated.
From Columbia Gas.
Columbia Gas, sorry. Okay, I'm sorry.
We've all done that about nine times. We, every time, both of us. So, you're good.
That's why you guys sit on that side of the table.
No, so we do anticipate that, like I said, we, we had 9.3. This is kind of the, the end of the allocation. If you remember correctly, it has to be allocated by 2025 and spent by 2026, as Andrew keeps reminding me every day. We, yeah.
Ignore my question, and you were absolutely right.
I do anticipate some money will come back as we're kind of moving forward through this process. We do have a couple of applications that are currently in the queue that we've kind of
They're not going to
No, we've held. But I do, you know, I do anticipate we may be able to turn some money back when we're done, I hope. Not to the, to the federal government, but to other projects.
To us.
Yeah, back to us.
To our streets, if I ever
Yeah. And I will also just say that, well, I know this is a lot to absorb in one night. Time is important to me and Lynn because we are prepared for a town meeting, one, but two, we also do have a meeting coming up with bond council to talk about the middle school bond. And so we just want to make sure that all of our ducks are in a row before we walk into that meeting. Thank you.
That makes sense.
That makes sense.
Very much so. We're really fortunate how fiscally sound we are and that we can take care of this within our capacity.
Yes. Thank you to everybody's hard work.
Yes.
We appreciate it greatly.
I appreciate you coming in and being very honest and taking responsibility in things that you feel as though you should take responsibility for.
And we should. That was the easy part. I mean, we definitely appreciate what you guys are, that you guys are working with us on this. And we certainly
We're all working for the people of North Andover.
We're all pulling the same
For the same goal.
We're all on the same team.
Right.
Same goal.
Definitely committed to not being here ever again.
Yeah, you can see that look on your face.
I second that motion.
All right, with that, I'll take a motion.
Select Board approved the ARPa request of $380,000 to fund revenue replacement for North Andover Public Schools.
I'll second that. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Madam Chair, I think it will take us a little few minutes to go through the town meeting articles. And I don't want to postpone things even more because I'm excited. But maybe we want to do the licenses quickly since they are too simple.
I saw some heads rise. That's time as may. I'll take a motion to go into licensing.
So moved.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Over to you, Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We are now on licensing. Our first item, Item A, is application from Constantino's Chongres of Patrick's North Shore LLC located at 80 Chickering Road for a common victor license.
We're very excited to, very excited about this. Yes. We've been waiting.
The mood is lifted in this room.
We've been waiting for Roast Beef sandwiches to come back.
We don't mean budget issues.
We'll take $5 million worth of Roast Beef sandwiches.
I highly recommend hosting school fundraisers.
Is it, this is Patrick's?
Yes.
Oh, good name. So a good Irish roast beef sandwich. And a lot of green on your walls. I think that's great.
There's even more inside.
The, the application appears to be, everything is in order. Somebody tell us about the business, your plans, and we'll move from there.
Well, just looking to keep that location going. In need of a refresh. And, you know, it's all up to code. The community development department, those guys were great, very professional. They helped us solve some, you know, some questions in the zone, in the zoning and new codes. And we're getting ready to go, and we're at the, you know, this is one of our last steps.
Yeah. But when do you think you're going to open?
We've just got a couple more inspections that we're wrapping up, and then obviously dislicense as well.
I think the people of North Andover would not be pleased with us. We didn't give you this one.
That's very interesting.
We're looking forward to feeding everybody as well.
We're looking forward to it.
So Roast Beef, what do you get, what are you going to have on the menu?
We brought back some of the old people that worked there 25 years ago with, if you're familiar with Dave, the original owner. So they were, they were trained by Dave, and they're trying to really get it back to where it was before. It's been a little checkered the last few years over there. But, you know, now with the refreshed building and the old crew back, we're looking forward to getting basically their original menu, plus a lot more local favorites, like the chicken barbs, some hot dogs like Lawton's.
Do you know what that means? Do you know what chicken bar means?
Yes.
Of course he knows what a chicken bar is.
They're made with maize.
Yes.
Boiled chicken on meat.
Boiled chicken with maize. No, it's a regional dish.
Oh, without a doubt. I've done the research. We actually named ours the tally ho after one of the original establishments that served it 70 years ago.
They've revitalized, it's come back with a vengeance.
It's Merrimack Valley. People traveled for that.
And nobody knows what it is, even as close as North Reading.
Yes, agreed.
This is true.
I had a friend that ordered it and thought they were getting like a barbecue chicken sandwich.
I've, I've heard that about 600 times. Where's, where's the barbecue sauce?
Yes. There, it's in this little cup. Just pour it on it, you'll never know.
I, I know a 15-year-old who will be there every day after summer fun for summer, so.
I just tell him the mayonnaise is Merrimack Valley's barbecue sauce.
That's right. Okay, well, there's no other questions. I'd be happy to take a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Look forward to seeing you all there.
Yes, thank you. Appreciate it.
I can't believe I'm going to say this. We need to, we need to raise the meals tax.
All right.
Talk tonight, Roast Beef.
Stop raising, raise.
Next, next up, Item B, an application from Joshua Yanis of Psychic Readings of North Andover located at 1363 Turnpike Street for a fortune teller license renewal.
Good evening, everybody. How are you doing?
All right.
Great. Can you tell us what our budget deficit will be next year?
$10 million to pay directly to me.
Maybe go ahead and tell us a little bit about your business, please.
So we're psychic readings over at 163 Turnpike Street. We do top palm readings, tarot card readings, energy readings, based off of your aura, your energy. I'm a Virgo, just saying.
Okay, I'll open up to any questions from the board?
No questions.
Nothing?
No question.
It's almost like a free reading.
That's true.
Does anybody want to ask me what I'm thinking right now?
I'm afraid to ask that. All right. If there are, if there are no questions, I will take a motion.
I'll move that the Select Board, acting as licensing commissioners, hold on, approve the application from Joshua Yanis of Psychic Readings of North Andover located at 163 Turnpike Street for a fortune teller license renewal.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
But you already knew that, so.
You guys are forgetting to call me handsome. Well, thank you all very much. It's a pleasure. See you all next year, okay?
Thank you. Have a good night.
Did I make that joke last year, too? I think I might have. All right. I will, I will take a motion.
I move that the Select Board acting as licensing
Nope. To come out of licensing. Oh, sorry, jeez. Sorry, Dave.
I move that the Select Board acting as licensing commission close the meeting of the licensing commission.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
We have, back to you, Laura.
All right, now we're, we've come to Melissa's favorite time of year, the Warren.
She's been very patient.
Donovan's getting closer up to you.
So as I'm doing this, I do see that we have at least two people in the audience who probably are here for Warren articles. The first one is Attorney Mike Morris, who represents the vocational school. So if you don't mind, I'll invite him to come up with me. Maybe we'll do that first. Okay. So Attorney Morris, if you don't mind. Thank you.
Thank you, John Manager.
His legs are probably asleep back there.
Now, this has been an exciting meeting. Very interesting.
Yeah, so exciting.
Let's do it again next week.
Let's never do it again. Let's never. So I'm hoping we get this to come up, but it is fighting me right now. It's like what happened to you, Dee, last time.
Laura, if we use the draft Warren articles from four form?
I am. I, if you pull up the agenda from the calendar, or it's in the file. I put them in the file, too. Just the articles that we're doing tonight.
Oh, okay.
Okay. So Greater Lawrence has presented two articles. I'm going to walk you through them one at a time. I would love to show you the presentation I have, but it apparently is going to do to me what it did to Dee just last week, Dee. So we'll just, going to wing it. So the first of Greater Lawrence's article is Article 21, and they are asking us to amend the regional agreement because the current regional agreement does not allow for a lease of property. And as you know, they are planning to lease some land and a building at the municipal airport in order to have new programming. I'm sorry, I took over like this whole table here. In order to do a new program, basically fixing airplanes. So it will be a 20-year lease with a monthly rent of $495.23, with an option for a four-year extension. There will be an annual rent adjustment. The cost to the town, and you know that I like to say that we always look at these things in a vacuum, right? So if, in today's money, the cost to the town is $118 a year for the lease and $18 in expenses. And the expenses are like snowplowing, landscaping, that kind of thing. That's it. So that's an easy one, I think, right?
Yeah. And the only thing I would add is, just, just to clarify. So the special act that created the district that set forth that we could do this amendment, it just wasn't in the, in the district agreement. So we're going to each of the four member communities, Methuen, Lawrence, Andover, and North Andover, and asking them to agree to amend. So in Andover, we'll go in front of the town meeting, much like in North Andover. And in Lawrence and Methuen, just the city council will vote. And we anticipate positive, well, at least in the cities, we know what the outcome will be.
And the regional agreement amendment is actually very specific to this lease. So it does not just say, you can now lease whatever you want. It's very specific to this lease. Okay. So that's one. The second one is different. So we actually don't have to put this on a town meeting. We could choose to withdraw it. Andover, I know you can't see it. I can see it. It's just, Andover, Andover has voted not to move it forward at town meeting and just to allow it to go into effect. So basically, the school is seeking authorization for a $4 million bond to purchase land and build in the city of Lawrence in order to expand their programming. With our current enrollment numbers, we'd be responsible for about 2% of the bond. It's a 10-year bond, and I anticipate it would cost us about $10,000 a year. So what the regional agreement says is that the district has to give us notice of the fact that they're planning on taking a bond, and we have the right to either do nothing, and they're allowed to take the bond, or to put it to town meeting for a vote. So they were kind enough to give us notice during the open period where our warrant was open, in case we wanted to put it on. We put it on as a placeholder. Like I said, Andover has decided just to allow it, that it's not something that they think needs to move forward. But I want to give you all the opportunity to make that decision for yourselves. And Attorney Morris, am I missing anything on that?
It simply stated, Greater Lawrence Technical School District is actually churning down 1,200 applicants a year, which is amazing. So this would allow them to, to bring on 300 additional students each year. And the purpose of this satellite campus, we'll say, which will be right down the street, will be for medical professional training, which is very much needed in, in Andover, North Andover, the Merrimack Valley. I also would add, I guess, that traditionally, when we have gone, because I've been involved in a few of these votes for the district to incur debt in the past, Andover, North Andover being towns, and Methuen, when it was a town way back when, my dad could probably speak to it because he represented the district as well, always, always voted merely to accept the notice and not have it go to town meeting. That has been the precedent. There's no actual legislative requirement that it go in front of town meeting to be approved, though the towns have the right to bring it to town meeting for though the towns have the right to bring it to town meeting for a vote to express disapproval. So Andover Select Board actually voted just to accept the notice and take no further action.
Any other recommendations?
Personally, I would probably just accept the notice. This isn't gonna, it would be interesting to set precedent where we would have a town meeting because we may not always have the luxury of someone letting us know during when the warrant's open, you know? And so if, I think if we bring this forward now, we would kinda set a precedent that we always want to do that, and that would maybe result in us calling special town meetings that would cost more than a $10,000 annual monthly payment.
And we historically have just accepted it, and that goes forever.
Yeah. So my recommendation would be to withdraw this article. Go forward with Article 21, but withdraw Article 22. So I don't know if you want to, well, attorney Morris is here, take your, make your recommendations on these two articles. It's up to you.
I'm fine doing that. Any other question, any concerns about withdrawing Article 22? Is that right?
Yep.
So do we have to vote to withdraw it?
So actually, I would, yes, we'll have you vote to withdraw it. So they actually presented it, so it's a little bit of a funny, kind of a funny situation. But yes, I would have you vote to withdraw it.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, I can't see any reason, it's a benefit to the community being able to send more kids to Greater Lawrence.
Well, I mean, I do have a few questions about that.
Sure.
How many students go to Greater Lawrence? How many are North Andover students? What do you, how many additional North Andover students do you expect to be able to accept?
You'll have to forgive me, because I am here in the place of the superintendent and he could rattle these numbers off the top of his head. And I do not have those facts, but you know, what I can represent is that I think traditionally, North Andover has tracked it about 2% of the overall school population. And I can honestly say that in Lawrence and Methuen, the demand for the technical school is exceedingly high. So while this does represent a huge opportunity for North Andover students, we are seeing some increased interest from North Andover students, especially given the rise of technical school education that's really starting to come about. The true demand and need is in the city of Methuen and Lawrence. So we anticipate that, you know, we're gonna be getting a lot of applications from those two cities as well.
And their burden is higher due to their enrollment?
Because it's based on.
It's based on.
It's all based upon your percentage.
Other technical schools in the area. This is based on your enrollment.
And does that fluctuate every year based on enrollment? Like, okay, so it's not a static number?
It is not. We get an assessment quarterly. This year, the assessment was higher than it typically is. We had more students than usual.
That's great though, right? I mean, I'm happy that students are exercising that option and I'm.
But we're not spending the money here to educate them at the high school.
Correct.
We're spending it at the, it like shifts. It's not like double cost.
No. We don't create, we don't get the 77 for those students either.
They do.
I was a little nervous listening to the presentation before, coming off the heels of that, but I. Just say we're, you know. It is, we're very thankful to be so welcomed and well-received by North Andover, Andover, Methuen and Lawrence. It's really a wonderful thing to be able to do something positive for kids. And as I indicated, I know John Lovoy, the superintendent, can speak quite eloquently about how technical school education is really on the rise right now. And just so you know too, and on the prior article, this is only, this will only be the second program in Massachusetts that's actually teaching aviation mechanics, which is amazing to me. So we're really at the cutting edge, yeah. And I extended the invite to the town mandrel, extended to each member of the select board. If you ever want a tour of the Greater Lawrence Technical School, Mr. Lovoy would be pleased to give it to you. Because it truly is, and I, it's an amazing place to go to and not, it's a real hidden gem of the Merrimack Valley.
He was very excited when he came to talk about the aviation program.
It's contagious too.
Then I will take a motion to withdraw Article 22.
So moved.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And then.
Now it's working.
Well, I'm like ITing right now.
Multi-talented.
I know. I think. Yes, so we would be looking for a motion either to recommend or not recommend Article 21, which would be the Greater Lawrence Vogue.
So that Article 21 was the hanger?
That would be the hanger, yeah.
The lease.
It changed the regional agreement.
I'll make a motion favorable action on Article 21.
I'll second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for coming tonight.
And then we'll do a motion to withdraw Article 21. Do you have any two?
We just did that.
I missed it because I was doing IT.
We're super efficient.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Good job, Morris.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your patience.
All right, and I believe I saw Jim Ward back there, and I don't know if he's also here to maybe hear what you're gonna all be doing about his citizen petition maybe? Or if he's just here because he really wants to hear about all the articles. So I don't know if you wanna take his out of order? So that would be, look, this is very confusing now because I have to like.
Because you're gonna have to keep track of what we've.
We did Article.
Article 21.
So we asked for 25, Mrs. Doric Barnes. And I believe it was presented to you at the last meeting, correct?
It was, yep.
Yeah.
Now, we have a couple of options. I know sometimes with the citizen petition, we don't always feel like we fully have gotten all of our information. And we always have the option of recommending at town meeting. That's always an option. Doesn't have to be written in the warrant. We can, you know, take our time on some of them if you want to. I just wasn't sure with him here if you wanted to take any action.
Does anyone have any questions from last meeting?
I think I was pretty clear last time, but yeah.
I don't know what new information I'm gonna learn between now and town meeting either, so.
Okay. So are we consulting?
I think for me, but I think this is just simply talking to the planning board, what's the mechanism for expanding it beyond this one little area? But we worry about that after town meeting this year.
Did you have something that you wanted to say that would be short?
I think he's excited about that aviation program.
Well, he's got trains, and then he'll have planes and boats and.
Boats and planes and trains and all of them. Peter just told me he's had a pilot, airplane pilot's license as well as a ship driving license. New information. Yeah, we're just, we've been really enthused about the towns, the town board's support through walking through this process and Jean's help and the planning board and now the select board. And we think this is a really neat inspirational project for artists and tinkerer prototypers like me with the solar boat to, you know, make good use of these big old historic structures that otherwise have fallen to disarray. And you see some of the, you know, the outcountry ones falling down. And so I think, you know, this is an exciting prototype of the idea in the greater old center districts. And then, yeah, if it's, if it goes well, it could be then expanded in the future, you know, with another article or otherwise as it makes sense. But we think it'll, we think that, you know, again, the very low impact way it's laid out that was advised by the planning board, basically zero impact as humanly possible with all the restrictions and controls and that it doesn't affect what people can do in their own property under their R1 or R3, whatever they can legally do, they can do exactly the same, which has been, was brought up by various people, so. Nothing really new.
The thing that I like about it, it does, we have these beautiful historic structures. I mean, they're really beautiful and you don't see them in many other communities. But to have maybe a little help in preserving and keeping them up so that they don't fall into disrepair, that it just adds to the charm and to the old center. But I think people should know, this is not for, you have a big garage and now you can do that. That's not part of it. So you don't have to worry about your neighbor down the street with the big garage and what's that gonna become? Because it's not part of it.
There's very few, really, in the whole scheme of things.
If adopted as written, how many barns could potentially this impact?
The number, I think, is around nine in the district.
Has anyone else kinda put their hand up and said, you know what, actually I might wanna consider something, I may not know, it's.
There's, yeah, there's a couple nibbles, but right now, people are doing things in their own barns that they're doing. But, you know, I had the idea of you, you know, when Dana took all his stuff away, that, you know, I approached the kittrages and before I could even finish talking, Nan was so excited about the idea because she's so afraid of the barn just falling apart. Then I went in and found out the condition of the barn. I was like, where the hell did I get myself into? Got Jimmy D'Angelo involved, you know, D'Angelo Engineering, and we made a very large spreadsheet. And it's like, okay, what am I really getting into? But, you know, it's just like the Stevens Senators said, like a labor of love is gonna make an amazing thing. I can't wait to show you guys, you know, what we do in there. You know, Paul Hutchins will hopefully be excited to sign those permits, you know, because that's what started all this. We went in, you know, we wanted to do it right, wanted to put some more outlets in, wanted to insulate it properly. We had some, you know, different things to repair, a lot of rotted stuff. And, you know, historic district commission, obviously, we're working on the windows because those are all rotted out. But yeah, so it's, it'll be really neat to see. But outside, everything looked the same and none, this article has, no work that happens can ever be visible from the street. Noise, smells, flares, flashes, sound, you know, cars, any, you know, maximum two cars has to be not on the public street and ideally not visible from the public street, which the planning board would have to approve. You know, if there's no way to park a car out of sight, maybe they'd approve it being in sight. But like in the case of the Kittrage barn, there's plenty of spaces all over the place in that property, so. Any other questions or?
Thank you, thank you for coming tonight. Appreciate it.
It's a great idea for preservation. And I used to collect eggs at the Kittrage farm with your sister Dorothy.
And they rarely let me collect the eggs. They thought I was gonna break them.
Bite you, those chickens, they really did. That and we would help with the milking kids.
I just talked to Dorothy today. I'm gonna have to tell her.
Yeah, she'll remember.
I'll take a motion.
I will move, the select board recommend favorable action on Article 25 as printed in our draft warrant.
Oh, sorry.
Twenty-five, twenty-six is withdrawn because that was the map.
Okay, did we just?
We gotta go back?
Nope, we got Article 25.
It's just right underneath.
It's Article 20 zoning, but Article 25 of the warrants.
Sorry.
Okay, I got a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, here we go. So we're gonna, we heard animal control earlier today. I believe you all did Articles 1 through 4 already at the last meeting. You've heard the Article 5 animal control. Do we feel like we're ready to take a position on that?
Yep. Can I argue for five cats or? I'm really not a cat person though.
Hey goodness, I can tell my kids we can hold.
I was thinking the whole time he was talking when he said, well, I need to know about the turtles. And I'm thinking in my head, unless the cat ate it.
There are parents who are happy with these limits, by the way.
So I will take a motion on Article 5.
I'll move favorable action on Article 5.
I'll second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye. I scroll.
Sorry, Article 5 is.
It's really long.
So the next article we're gonna look at is Article 7, okay, which is the trust fund investments. This is a local option that was part of the fiscal year '24 state budget. And basically what it does is it allows a municipal treasurer to apply the prudent investor rule. So currently, we're very, very restricted on how we can invest our trust funds. This only applies to trust funds. We could do a trust company, a cooperative bank, some securities, but it's very limited. So this option basically would allow us to have a wider selection of investments. But since it's allowing that, it requires us to follow something called the prudent investor rule. I don't have any concerns about moving forward with this. We've done a really great job with our current town treasurer on our investments. Lynn will tell you that our interest has surpassed, I think, even now where we thought it was going to be. So it's very exciting, and I think this is gonna be a good tool. Now, I will add that if you have a trust fund that was given to the town and it dictates where it has to be invested, that still stands, right? So this would only be if it did not dictate where it needed to be invested.
How often do we get a trust fund?
But it does happen. A lot of the time, it is more of like somebody leaves money to us in a will, right? Like Mr. Andrews that left the money to the schools last year in the scholarship, that's an example.
Very nice.
And Harold Duchamp left.
Nice surprises, right?
It is nice, yeah.
This just basically means you can't like throw in a hedge fund, right?
You could not throw in a hedge fund. She has to follow very specific prudent investor rules. I mean, she can't go, she cannot go on that chalk show and invest in anything, no. Yeah, be very diligent, and she does a great job.
Upwards of $5 million.
That they could come up with in the next 12 days, yeah.
That they would like to put to the school. Okay, sorry. Are we ready to vote on that or do we think we need more information?
Yeah, I'll take a motion.
I'll move favorable action on Article 7.
I'll second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
So the next one's prior year bills. This is a sad one because this is the first time we've had it since I've been here. It's actually the first time in my entire career I've had a prior year bill.
Oh, that is so sad.
So it does make me very sad, but these are both for good reasons. So one of them, the Frono, it was a veteran who passed away and the Frono Poly did not get us the bill in a timely manner. They were trying to figure out how they were gonna pay it. Eventually, it came to veterans. The other one, GEI, is actually, if you remember correctly, last year, maybe even a little bit longer, we had the oil tanker that fell over and the oil went into the.
Causeway?
Yes, so GEI, it was the consultant that we're using to kind of as a third party, making sure that they're doing the cleanup correctly. We were hoping that our insurance company would go ahead and pay for this, but they haven't yet, so we need to make the payment. Those are our two prior bills.
It needs a four-fifths vote.
A four-fifths vote at town meeting, yes.
Really?
Good luck, Mar.
Interesting.
Mar's gonna figure that, voice vote on that.
We might wanna order some of this differently then, perhaps maybe to show the need for it.
The four-fifths vote, is that for our charter or that's the state law?
That's the state law, yeah.
I'm not kidding, really.
We try to, we try to, we try to never have a prior year bill.
So of course.
Right, it's like the worst-case scenario. I mean, something slipped through or that, like something was not built correctly.
But that's not the case with either one of these.
No, I mean, we were trying to get the insurance to pay for the GEI one and the veterans one is honestly just a very sad situation. But, you know, I don't imagine with this small amount, we would have issues with this at town meeting. If we came in and we had a huge amount of a last year bill, I would be more problematic.
It's explainable too.
Yeah, so.
I'll move favorable action on Article 8.
I'll second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so the next one, CIP, I just wanna clarify two changes. I wanna clarify a change and then I just wanna make sure that I was clear about something because I felt like I wasn't when I was like thinking about it in bed at night, so. A lot of people lose this. Yeah, so the first one is that we are gonna be removing the $3.6 million for the Kittrage design and pushing it back a year, maybe two years. So when we first built out the Facility Master Plan 2, we weren't sure if we were gonna have MSBA funding or not. And while MSBA funding is a wonderful thing, it is a very slow thing.
So slow.
So slow. It's very painful and wonderful, but very thankful, but very slow. So we don't need to do the transfer of the share and honestly, our council would rather we didn't in case the numbers fluctuate or change. And I'd rather we did it because right now, it's in a capital stabilization account and we can get interest, right? So that's been removed and I just want you all to be aware of that. The other thing is that there is a 30-month lead time on fire trucks. We have done, me and Lynn have done this whole dance about how we figure out how to buy a fire truck, right?
Is that COVID hangover?
It is, it's, but it's, I mean, it's.
But it seems like it's gonna be the norm now, from now until cruisers, ambulances, fire trucks, if possible to get.
So we went back and forth and the issue is, I cannot legally sign a contract unless there's an appropriation, right? So I can't say we'll pay the $1.7 million fire truck unless I know that the money's been appropriated. So our plan is to authorize a bond for the full amount, but not actually take the bond. So we'd never actually take it, but it would be the authorization. And in two years, we would use free cash to buy this fire truck. And that's only so we can place the order.
So you can order.
Just so we can order. It's so silly, but we can't, we couldn't think of another way around it. We met with.
Creative.
Yeah, I mean, Lynn and I met with the company.
How are other communities doing this or not?
I think some communities may just be signing the contract, but that's not, yeah, it would not be a good.
You're not doing it.
Yeah.
And if we're doing it as a bond, and even though we're not really doing it as a bond, does that impact? And if we're doing it as a bond, and even though we're not really doing it as a bond, does that impact the 3.8 for the Rexplex as a bond?
No, because we won't actually ever sell these.
Okay.
Yeah. When we take a bond typically, until we actually make the acquisition, we, even if we're like, so for instance, middle school, we haven't actually taken those bonds yet, we'll be doing that shortly, we pay with cash on hand because we have cash. And so we wait until the last possible second because we don't want the interest to start before we need. And so, yeah, this instance, it really is just kind of like a game of cards where we need to make an appropriation. It would have killed me to appropriate $1.7 million this year and not spend it for three years. It's just so silly. So I want, but I felt like I wasn't clear about that when I presented and I apologize if I wasn't. So I just wanted to make sure that I highlighted that on here, so.
That means we're locking in the price too, which if we waited.
I can't even imagine what a fire truck's going to cost in three years.
I don't, I hope we don't need to do it.
They're doing a really good job of taking care of what they have right now, so.
Just a quick, the track is in here, right?
Yes.
Where is it? What line item is it? Because that was, someone asked me that. Well, isn't, is it the track that's showing the school budget? I was like, nope, that's not the capital.
Nope, we wish, but it's not. It's way down the bottom, Lynn. I can't, so I have this, because I'm displaying on two screens, I can't actually look at the budget. But the track is in fact in there. It's a $1 million expenditure. The thing that changed in the budget, if you remember correctly.
Line 14.
Is it in Rexplex?
Line 14.
No, that's the Rexplex.
Just says the word track.
It is, I believe. All right, well, hold on, let me, please hold. Let me pull it up. So we had originally budgeted for the A, B, E, C, C in the operating budget.
That's still in there.
So that should re-track.
Okay.
No? Then we should fix that.
Is 15.
Is 1.2.
Okay, so that's a mistake. We'll fix that.
So the A, B, E, C, C becomes the track.
It should be.
Yes, and A, B, E, C, C is off the table right now.
Yes.
And we're using the money that we were going to use for the A, B, E, C, C in the operating budget for the Rexplex. And that money is debt. We're using debt. Don't forget to do that. That's just like extra debt holdover. We're using it to do a capital plan. Oh no, I left the screen again.
So what becomes the track then? Sorry.
The A, B, E, C, C.
Because that's not supposed to be.
But you just said we're using that for the Rexplex.
We're using the money, so there was, it was a million dollars in the budget for the A, B, E, C, C.
Yeah.
And in the operating budget.
Oh, and the, not the capital. Gotcha.
So we'll fix that. That's just, thank you for.
Melissa, so high school fire alarm, $900,000?
It's still beeping.
It's, it's not, it's not even, apparently it's a half million dollar problem.
There is still more work to do. So that, what they did right now was.
They just turn, they turn it off during the day, right?
No, 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 it's not off, no. It was off during the day.
No, that's why, that's why I was.
It was off during the day.
They were, we were doing that.
Yes, it was off during the day and we were having details.
Yes.
That is not what we're doing anymore. So what they did basically was they replaced the panel. And the panel is no longer off shooting. But basically, when the original wiring was done, back when they built the high school, much of the wiring was done incorrectly. So it's an entirely, it's an entire rewiring project.
And obviously, it's been way too long.
You can't go back after, no recourse.
So they did, what they did with replacing the panel stopped us having to basically dump the school out four times a day.
Right.
Which was very unfortunate. So we were all thankful that we were able to make that repair. And thanks to Steve Foster and to Chief Ware because they, and Scott Nuzzbaum and Lieutenant Killcoin, I could just keep going. But they all, they really come up with a plan that allowed us to basically kind of have like a short-term fix while we moved forward. So yes, there's still money.
Is $500,000 like a whole new system?
It's basically an entirely system.
And so we'll put it out to bid?
Yes.
Because maybe, what I, just because at the middle school, whatever, they had a proprietary speaker system, which.
Yes.
Makes no sense. Right, so if it's proprietary or something, we may be able to do better than that if we go to something that is not proprietary. I don't know.
We do try to use the same fire alarm boxes throughout the entire town because we have one vendor who comes in and services them annually.
Plus their fire department, they don't have to learn a new box.
Yeah, no, that makes tons of sense.
But yes, we'll fix that. So do we want, we, would we consider, are there any other questions?
The only, the only other question I had is on road improvements on six.
Okay.
That's just this year's allocation for the 25 to 29 plan, correct?
This year's allocation for the 29, the 25 to 29 plan. So that would just be this.
Okay, it's not 1.2 spread out over those.
Oh, absolutely not, no. So about.
Just wanted to make sure.
So about 825 of that is Chapter 90. And Chapter 90 has been very level funded for the last, I'd say, decade. There, last year or the year before, there was an additional appropriation that was like a winter fund that came in like, and it was about 170 maybe, but it's been pretty level. So I think one of the issues that we're kind of seeing, and Jim was going to come tonight, but unfortunately he had a death in his family, so he's going to present at your next meeting. One of the issues that we're seeing is that our money just, it's not going, because of COVID inflation, it's just not going as far.
So I guess that's my question. Is there any opportunity, this is my question from Jim, is there any opportunity to increase that? Or is it almost not even worth it because we don't have DBW staff to?
So it's all external, but I would, so what I would say, and if you had John and Jim in front of you right now, they would say that it probably doesn't make sense to increase it until we finish the Columbia Gas work this year.
Okay.
Because that's a massive project. And we have one project manager, Curtis, who does a great job. But it's a lot to have, a lot of portion of the town to be under construction at a time. And then we can kind of move forward on the rest of it. But I do think that that's something we're going to have to obviously invest over the next couple of years.
All right, I'll hold the rest of my questions for when Jim's back before us on that.
He's got, he's run a whole bunch of new formulas. We just updated the PMA management plan. So we have, yeah, we just went through.
Was it updated on the website now or no?
Not yet. What we did was we went through, we had a contract to come in over the last year and do a new rating of every single road.
Great.
So everything's updated. Everything's updated.
Okay, great.
It's interesting, a lot of the streets that we get concerns and calls about, either are state routes, which is hard. Or two are actually ones that are rated better than some of the other ones. I mean, I remember we can only.
Interesting, Great Pond.
Yeah, we can only use, so Great Pond, part of Great Pond Road is in plan this year.
Yeah.
We can only use Chapter 90 money for regional roadways. So that adds to it too. So one of the things that we really need to look at as we're going through.
And that's two-thirds of the budget.
It is. As we go in through next year is we need to do a blanket acceptance on a lot of the roadways that have not been accepted because we're not getting Chapter 70 money for those. Even though we're plowing, we may be doing, there's a lot of roads that perhaps we're not, are like just held up by planning board or not ever released. We need to just go through and accept them all so that we can get funding, more funding. And so that's an option, yes.
What exactly is a regional roadway?
So a regional roadway is one basically described as it's used to get to another part of town. So if you're like a cul-de-sac, not a, not a throughway type street, you wouldn't be considered regional.
Like Salem Street would qualify as a regional road?
I would say Salem.
Salem Street.
But it's not a numbered state road.
That has to be a numbered state road, yeah. Just has to be something that's traveled by members of the town.
It's all the places that people. Andover Street. Never Johnson and Taylor.
The season of potholes. It'll be better in a month. We'll move on to something else, I promise. And we'll get the potholes filled. It's just, this is always the toughest time of year because no matter what we do, it's either raining or it's cold. And it comes back up and it's very frustrating. So I totally get it. And I think it's someplace we need to invest moving forward.
There was, there's some article in front of the state legislature too, right, to include.
To increase Chapter 90, yeah.
Think they probably try that every year.
It's a popular one. And it would be great to see, you know. But I think a lot of the focus that I've seen from MMA and Deacon Kirkme, if I'm wrong, has been a lot of it on rural roads. That really would have been where the focus has been on communities that can't afford to do any roadwork. And so I don't know how much will benefit from some of these changes.
Every year, yeah. It's interesting when you go to other towns and you start paying attention, like our roads are really no different than other communities. Like everybody's got their problems.
Especially this time here.
Yeah, it's the ones that you see every day in your commute that just stick in your head.
Scrabble, you know.
You know where that gets you. So you can avoid it. It really is helpful.
So do.
No, I don't, no.
Because this needs to be changed.
I would just vote as amended.
We know the change.
Yeah, but I think we want to have the CIP reported in the warrant.
With that, I'll take a motion.
I'll move favorable action on Article nine as amended and discussed at tonight's meeting.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so Article 10 is CPC. I don't believe you took a position on that at the last meeting. I know you did hear the presentation. I did bring with me, just in case you needed it, the estimated CPC debt service schedule based on the 10 years that they've asked us to use. So that's about, we usually do decreasing, decreasing payments. So it would start at 826 and go down to 613. You can only bond your local contribution, which for us is approximately $2 million. So we still would have a fair amount of capacity. Which I think is important because we may have, you know, other projects, open space, et cetera, that are going to come up.
No, I appreciate all the work that you've done to get this Rexplex moving forward. And the costs have increased significantly. And to get us here without an impact to the residences.
And to not just have to walk away from it after.
So many years of.
So much trouble.
Dee's excited to do the project and to be, yes, to see it. I mean, the. The neighborhood is excited about it. Most of it is excited.
98% of the time.
98% of the neighborhood is excited to see it start, so. Any other questions on CPC?
My only other CPC related question is, maybe this is inappropriate now, but do we ever vote on the last year's grant agreement for the barn? Do we? We still haven't voted on that yet.
We're still in negotiations with them.
We're still in discussion.
We're back in negotiations, yes.
And with other.
And with other people, too.
Steve Coolidge.
Okay.
A lot of them didn't move forward, right?
So money still sits, it sits encumbered, but yeah.
At some point, we'll have to say to them, we, yeah. But it's encumbered right now. And it wouldn't, what basically happens is that CPC would need to basically make a determination that that money's not going to be used. And then there'd be a vote at town meeting.
Yeah, we did that a new years ago. We're holding money in reserve for the property next to the youth center. For a while, we held that for a while.
I'll take a motion on CPC.
I'll move favorable action on Article 10.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Article 11 is the annual vote on the salaries for elected officials. There is no changes.
I'll take a motion.
Can I ask a silly question?
No silly questions.
Given the current situation, should we forego this? I mean, I know it's, it's small, but it's, it's a gesture. Should we forego our own salaries? Just getting in the game here?
Do you want to not recommend and see where we are in a few weeks?
I don't know.
I, so.
Every little bit.
The impact of that, if some of us perhaps are paying towards retirement, that could be problematic.
That is a problem.
Right, so we may want to just kind of think that through before we.
That's why I'm asking that question.
It's a wonderful gesture, I think. I just, you know, I wouldn't want one of you to go sometime to retire from, from misservice. Oh, we lost a year. Yeah, you'd lose a year.
It might be difficult to get it back.
Yes.
It would, it would be, yes.
Having done this for so long, especially when the kids were little, like your children, it's pizza, it's babysitters, it's this, it's that.
Can always donate.
Exactly, you can make donations.
Okay.
All right, so do we want to sit on this one?
Who's that?
Yep, you can definitely sit on it if you'd like.
I'll take a motion, yeah.
I'll move favorable action. On Article 11.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so number 12 is our revolving funds. As you know, per the Municipal Modernization Act, we have to vote these annually because they're bylaw now. There's only one addition, which is the opioid settlement fund. So basically, we've been getting money in from all of the different lawsuits that we were part of. They are now allowing us to do a revolving fund for that. There was a lot of up in the air about how that money was going to be spent. But we finally know. And so what will happen basically is that we'll go into the revolving fund and Dee is working with Crystal, who is now in Deanna's old position, and they'll come up with a plan to use those funds.
Have we spent any of that money yet? That's what I was thinking. It hasn't, but, okay. And there's certainly moves around what it can be.
Yes.
That's exciting though. That's a good amount of money.
It's great.
I'll take a motion on Article 12.
I'll move favorable action on Article 12.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion questions? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Article 13 is the budget. So I will say, I don't anticipate any changes to the budget. Because if you think about the deficit, right, the deficit means we spent more than we budgeted. So there, well, there is going to have to be, I think, $3 million in cuts made by the school department before they go into fiscal year 25. It should not affect their budget number at all.
Right, because they over.
Because it was an overspending, right.
Well, it's like those 16 positions that they.
Yes, so I just, I just want to make that point. Like, well, I agree that there 100% should be a plan moving forward. That plan doesn't really affect the budget as presented.
It's uneasy though to feel like.
I understand that. And I, I'm on board with reporting at town meeting. I don't have an issue with that at all. And I don't want, I'm 100% fine with that. I just want to make that kind of clear.
That does make.
But maybe it makes sense to report at town meeting. I mean, I think there's a lot of discussion and, I don't say investigation, but, you know, thought that needs to go into kind of how we move forward. And I would be fine with reporting at town meeting if people want to. I just don't, you're not going to see a change to the budget amounts.
Right.
Right, because we're still giving them that amount of money. They just have to stay within it.
They need to take their responsibility and work within that budget.
Yes, there's no more money to give, so.
Yeah.
Well, that's.
Yeah, and well, they're getting a 5.5% increase.
I don't know. Is there, for consistently spending more than we're budgeting in certain areas, then why are we not budgeting more in those areas in anticipation of spending more? Like.
And cutting somewhere out.
You know what I mean?
And that's what I appreciate about looking at this budget is it tells us what 24 was compared to the request for 25.
And what we spent in 23, the actuals, which is.
So.
We're never, right, we're not going to change the money that we're giving the schools. They just need, nothing about voting on this changes them having to.
Still going to get that same amount of money.
Yeah, them, what they have to do to get to that number.
But perception wise, I understand if you want to wait. And that won't hurt my feelings. I just, it would not bother me. I completely understand the need for that.
I mean, this is probably not something that can happen, but like, can we hold on to some of that money so that when we're in this same, if we lease it to them in January or.
Create a second reserve.
So we kind of are doing that.
I don't think that's crazy. I think that's what I hope.
Because then once we know where they're at, and if by chance we end up with extra at the end, we'll pave some more roads. No.
I think there's two comments about that. One, if we did do that, they would have to make additional cuts, right? And we're already looking at $3 million cuts. So that's one bucket of it. The second bucket is don't forget that there's a salary reserve in the municipal side budget for the middle school teachers. And we know, right, that they're not going to need the middle school teachers in September. They're probably going to need the middle school teachers in January, February.
They're supposed to need the middle school teachers in September.
I don't think so because they're moving, the extra kid, like the kids are moving during the renovation into the addition, right? So we won't be hiring those people right away. So there actually is, I don't like to say that out loud, but there actually is some capacity for an emergency.
A little bit of a, okay.
I don't want to spend that money on anything except the middle school teachers. And that's my intent. And that's why it's in the town budget.
I mean, that is what we told. Residents, we are going to do that money.
And that's the money from Amazon, but.
But because we anticipated it for like a whole year, we're not going to use it for a whole, like, there will be a little excess.
We'll have that, that we're holding on to. And it's in the town side of the budget in a salary reserve, so it can't be transferred without Lynn. Next Lynn.
Lynn, you can't, you can't retire.
Lynn really wanted to go out with a bang.
Make it our work to do it.
Very, very end.
Exciting.
Yeah, yeah. We just wanted to keep it exciting for you.
Okay, thank you for that discussion. I just.
Yeah, I'm fine voting unless there's some hesitation. Then we'll take a motion. Yeah, right, I'll take them.
They don't do that anymore. That used to happen.
A lot, right.
A lot.
Uh, we're, what, Article 13? I will move that the Select Board recommend favorable action on Article three, Article 13.
I'll second.
Thirteen, thirteen.
We're going back, starting from the beginning.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so Article fourteen and fifteen, we can certainly take collectively if you'd like, and that's the two enterprise funds, water and sewer.
Any questions?
I'm not sure that I do.
I'll take a motion.
I'll move favorable action on Articles fourteen and fifteen.
I'll second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so this is where we're gonna have some fun. So this, these were supposed to be simple. And it's, that's why it's all on one slide.
Your idea of fun is weird.
I was promised a quiet town meeting.
So Article sixteen is going to be the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the special education stabilization account to the general fund budget. So you know the story.
That would have been two hundred and thirty thousand or whatever.
Whatever the math was.
It's like seven ninety-something in there right now. So there'll be, that's what will be left.
Is there a reason we wouldn't transfer the whole seven ninety?
Just because we don't need it. That's why I would say we should hold it.
She found a way to.
I would hold it.
And Lynn and team found a way to not completely create it.
For now. But yeah, that's why, so, and the seven fifty is the amount that we had always planned to transfer for the three years, so.
We're just doing it once. But that requires them to make more cuts.
They will need to make additional cuts, yes.
This is related but not related. Are we, how confident are we that Amazon's going to get their CFO?
I used to not want it to happen, and now.
They have one last test to pass. When they pass that test, they'll get their CFO. However, the agreement says that they have thirty days to pay it to the three hundred thousand dollars.
Could we ask nicely?
Can we ask really nicely?
It's a fire alarm test. So they just need to pass the fire alarm test. And they've been trying. There's been, you know, it's not like they haven't been.
So it may be a while if they've been trying and it has not been successful.
No, it's, so it's, they have pinpointed exactly what the issue is.
Okay.
So I do think that they will get it soon.
It's not our high school's spending, right?
It's not, no, no. It's actually a battery issue, which is hilarious. But yeah, they're, so they're almost there. And I think, I think, I think we'll get it.
And we'll ask nicely.
Yes.
Maybe they would be like really nice and give us some extra money.
Maybe. I don't think so, though. That's Article sixteen. And like I said, you know, if we're, if we're, when we do this, I'd prefer that we formally make a motion to suspend our rules and then make a motion to recommend the article. I don't like to not follow our rules, which, we have rules for a reason, right? We also realize that sometimes we have emergencies, and that's why the policy's not bylaws, right? So, but I do think it's important to kind of follow the process when we do that type of thing.
Absolutely.
I would ask if you move forward with Article sixteen, that we do first vote to suspend our rules and then vote to recommend.
So that will have to come from me or the moderator?
Do we have to do it tonight?
So you do it tonight. Oh, you do it tonight. We do it tonight. Yeah. And then FinCom will also have to do it on Wednesday.
Okay.
And I've gone, I put that on there, on agenda.
Okay, oh, this, I thought you meant we had to suspend it.
You can do that tonight, yeah.
Okay.
All right. So I'll make a motion to suspend our rules, suspend our, select board policies with regard to Article sixteen. So I recommend favorable action on Article sixteen.
I'll second that.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor to suspend our rules?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll recommend favorable action on Article sixteen.
And I'll second that.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I appreciate that, thank you. I know that's not an easy thing to do.
That's right, right.
Yes, you did it correct. You're good. Recommend it. Okay, so Article seventeen, I'm actually not going to have you report until town meeting, only because I, Lynn and I would like to make sure that the deficit is what the deficit is.
Yes.
Right? And so it makes no sense to vote tonight.
And I mean, it could even change after that.
It could, yes.
Because it's the middle of the.
And like, you know, Lynn and I were talking about earlier, we could have snowstorms.
I don't even want to talk about it.
Well, forecast.
This has been a year, right? So who knows?
Anything is possible.
Right? I'd rather wait until a little bit closer to town meeting.
We've got snowstorm to May.
Right.
Yeah, absolutely.
Really.
Absolutely.
More confident. So we're not going to vote on that tonight, if that's okay with all of you. Article eighteen is our stabilization transfer, put money in. And that's just to comply with our financial policies, and that's eighty thousand, two fifty-five. And I can tell you what the balance is.
Five point eight million, is that what it was?
That's right.
Oh, there, oh, it's in, right there.
It's in here.
And another reason why we were able to.
It's amazing, yeah.
Yeah.
It really helps.
Yeah, to handle what we handled.
It's a big change.
Yes.
I was on the finance meeting and on this board, big change.
And capital stabilization's four point six.
That's great.
Which I think was a couple, a hundred thousand just a couple of years ago.
That's really.
So I mean, it's really, yeah. It's good.
I will move favorable action on Article eighteen, if we're taking.
Oh, yeah.
I'll second it.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then we're recommending a capital stabilization transfer, three fifty. So that's more than the policies dictate, but we're really trying to save for all the designs for Silas Master Plan Two, so we don't have to bond any of those. And so we're just continuing to move money in there in order to achieve that goal.
I'll recommend favorable action.
I'll second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, next is the Rexplex. So this is kind of a chart that Dee made, and it documents basically what we currently have for funding and what funding we need to cover what the deficit is in that account. So we know now that the project costs eighteen point three million dollars, and we know that we don't all have that much. So we need more. So we have kind of a two-part plan. And originally, this says twenty-five years, because that's originally what we proposed. Now it will be ten, so we'll just fix that before we go to town meeting. But it's five point nine million from CPC. And then we have two funding sources that are non-CPC. It's three point eight million dollar bond, and then a million dollars being paid out of the operating fund. So that's the money that used to be the AB-ECC. The AB-ECC came in higher than they anticipated, so we couldn't afford to do it anyway. So it made sense to use it here to kind of keep that debt to a point where we would not need a debt exclusion, right? The nice thing about, and I'll go back to this one in just one second. The nice thing about the non-CPC debt is that it falls off pretty much in line with Kittredge and some of our other projects coming on, so it won't impact. And the payment is relatively small and continues to decline. So that's a real positive. And this chart just basically represents kind of what the new budget is. There's also one from twenty eighteen that if you really were excited, you could go on our new website and check out. We do have this great new flyer. We have a website for the project, and Dee has made a question and answer FAQ as well. Our plan is to print these out and put them in different buildings so people can see them and get information. We were trying to make it as easy as possible for people to.
Some of them with the kids and.
Digest, yeah.
To be clear, as I think everyone else in this room knows it, this project is actually probably a little bit scaled down from what was initially proposed six years ago, right? It certainly hasn't become more extravagant. That's not the reason for the, that's not the reason for the funding.
No. This is the exact same project, except that we plan to do the amphitheater as an ad alternate. Because looking at the costs, what you can see is that the amphitheater is almost seven hundred thousand dollars. And to me, that seems like it could be a good thing to kind of think about.
It's an easy thing to add on.
Yeah, an easy add-on, we could just make it an open space. Exactly. So we're gonna do, my advice would be to do that as an ad alt. Because that would give us a little bit of capacity and contingency as well, right? So, but other than that, this plan has not changed at all.
So when someone says, come back with something less extravagant, it's just not factual?
No. We have not, we've been, there has been no changes since twenty eighteen, when this was originally proposed at town meeting.
Smaller amount of.
We have, time has passed. And we are. Of, of inflation, unfortunately.
And I think moving that money from the AB-CC gym, like, this, well, it's gone now. But like, that expands what those kids can use for.
Oh, absolutely.
Yes.
Outside space.
Absolutely.
Like, there's a playground, like, they're gonna have so much access to additional for physical, for gym. They can do so many things.
And we are prepared to move forward at risk and pull permits. So that's exciting.
It is. Is there any thought about talking about Article twenty before we vote on CPC?
So we are having a lot of conversations about how that's going to work. And I will be following up with the moderator, Anne Rickreen and Terry, about the presentation process and how we're, but, you know, there's been, there was a little bit of chatter about taking them collectively. I don't know that that's a great idea.
Taking what collectively?
CPC and Rexplex.
Oh, no, I, I just think the discussion needs to happen.
Have a presentation on Rexplex and then.
Because then we could, God forbid it fails, right, twenty? We would have to pull it from CPC, right?
Yes.
Well, I mean, so if we vote, if we approve CPC, the CPC article, and then this one fails, right, that money just doesn't get allocated, right? So we don't have to go back and change anything with the CPC article, right?
I, part of me and what I, you know, we've talked about strategy, and I think that it makes the most sense to do a full presentation on the Rexplex.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Agreed.
And then have the votes after.
Yes.
And not have CPC, I don't think it makes sense for CPC to carry the burden of presenting the Rexplex.
Agreed.
I totally agree.
Totally agree. I think the discussion needs to happen outside of CPC.
I agree. And then CPC is a, is a great community partner to helping this.
Yes.
Couldn't do it without them. Absolutely could not do it without them.
But it's not just theirs, yeah.
Their role would be to talk about how they're gonna fund it and what the ten percent, like, what the ten-year payment would look like and how that impacts their ability to spend. But I think that the presentation needs to be.
Stand alone.
Yeah. So I'm, we, we've had a lot of conversations about this as we're quarterbacking this meeting, so we'll, we'll continue to work on that, but that's the thought process right now.
It's exciting. Yes, I can't wait.
And we'll have already had the school discussion by the time this comes up?
Yeah, the budgets first. Yeah, and so will the transfers.
Right, okay. Quiet town meeting, really.
Well, so CPC is Article thirteen, right? Yes, no? Ten?
Ten.
So technically, I guess, let me talk to Mark about how he wants to think about, how he wants to put these.
I'm just wondering if the good news comes, fun stuff before, I don't know.
I think it's just important to remind people to come.
I agree with that, wholeheartedly. There's a lot of actually very important things.
No matter how you're gonna vote on any of them, it's important for people to be there that night.
Absolutely.
I think, though, that it's probably, you, they're gonna want a solution. And if we can get very close to a perfect solution, then you could vote after it. They could be angry if they're not voting.
Right.
So I think that a solution to the problem.
The school problem?
Should be presented first.
You're saying the school problem?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Because they're, they're just gonna be like, no, everything's gonna be no.
Then there's no uncertainty, yeah.
So if you can relieve their fears, and unfortunate as it is, we believe we have it covered.
For this year, yeah.
That's a really good point.
Because they're just gonna be like this, so. And you can't blame them. They put their trust in all of us.
Absolutely.
And, but there were some extenuating circumstances to this problem, and a lot of it frankly came from the state or the fact that the state, the state didn't cause it, but it would have been nice if they stepped up for the added expenses of a lot of it. But they've got some of their own issues, too.
Yes.
So do we want to recommend the Rexplex tonight?
Yes.
All right.
Let's take a motion.
I'll move favorable action on Article twenty.
I'll second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so that leaves us to the other articles. So we had two street acceptances, which I know you heard at your last meeting. That was Ray Street and Woodlay Street, the whole citizen petitions. Do we feel like we're comfortable taking a position on these? I believe the planning board has, right?
They've got favorable action.
Yeah, that's typically what we wait for. That's kind of our trigger. Yeah, that's typically what we wait for. That's kind of our trigger.
Yeah, they have favorable action, and then the Woodlay is contingent on the conservation.
Which makes perfect sense. So what happens when we approve a street is it's basically just giving you the authorization to move forward with the acceptance. So after town meeting, we'll start kind of doing paperwork, and sometimes it falls apart after that, because either things aren't in order, we can't get it recorded correctly, the developer won't lose bonds, there's a million things that could happen, right? So right now, all you're doing is, is getting the acceptance, and then this will be actually come back to you again for the filing out.
Despite the confusion, I don't feel, I feel good about it.
Absolutely. So can we do both together?
Yeah, why not? Sure, absolutely.
I'll recommend favorable action on Article 23 and Article 24.
I'll second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so that takes us to Article 27, which is the trash pickup at Brookside. So did we hear that article? Did the gentleman come? Okay. So that has a financial impact of about $8,500 a year. I could tell you that on the town, and the concern is that we have a lot of condos who have come to us and asked for trash pickup that we've said no to. You know, I can tell you Mill Pond is one of them that calls all the time asking to get their recycling picked up. Typically, what happens is that either in the deed or in the planning board decision, it's pretty well documented that they're supposed to be in charge of their trash pickup.
But in this case, it's not.
It's not in, it's not in the decision, but it is in their deed.
It is in the deed.
It is in their deed. The deed does allow them the authority to hand off these jobs to a public entity, but it is in their deed that they're.
It doesn't say it will be part of what.
Yes, it is in their deed that they're responsible for their trash, just so you know. And I'm happy to follow that along. And again, we don't have to take a position on this tonight. I just think it's important, and even if we just want to, maybe we want to wait and have, when Jim comes to our next meeting, and just hear from Jim about the number of people who do ask us to.
He was here last week.
Yeah, he talked to us, and I think my, at least, I don't think it's just me, but I think the issue is how many other places does that open us up to? And maybe we need to look at it at a policy level, but this, yeah, unless we have some serious details about what would happen from here, it doesn't seem.
It's going to trickle.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just some numbers, and there were quite a few, and they're pretty extensive.
Well, but, but, correct me wrong, but, but taking this petition favorably would really just impact this property.
But then, how do you?
Someone has to come back and ask again.
Actually, you don't know that. I was wondering if there are other, are there other properties that?
I think there's about 29 properties that.
That would fall under this?
Fall under this. I believe, I believe there's about 29.
So.
So would it, so is that 8,500, is the 8,500 just for this property, or is 8,500 for the 29?
That's 1229, I believe. Hold on, I have it in an email. But that's also just an estimate. It would be helpful to me, and I could certainly ask them for this, if they have the bills from their current vendor, because then I could look at their tonnage and make a better, that's just the estimate that I have.
This is really tricky, because they. Really in fairness to the public is to let them know, and these are the other complexes that might also.
Right, I think that's an important part of the conversation. So maybe it makes sense not to make a recommendation tonight and kind of sit on this one a little bit longer.
I'd love to have more data, but.
Yeah, absolutely.
I know, I don't know how we're going to get that necessarily, but it might take a little bit.
So there's some, Jim says there's some type of syntax needs to be clarified. Nine or 10 units highlighted below, which would extend beyond Brookside, and then there's 29 town homes just in Brookside. And based on a rough, like, just the rough, what an average house does, that's $295 a year, so that's where we got the 8,500 from. But, you know, his concern, and he's not wrong, is that somebody like Mill Pond, who literally calls me annually to find out if they can have trash recycling pickup, is going to say, what about, what about us?
They're going to have it out of them next year, is what they're going to have.
Right, and then how do you?
Right. And trash costs went up pretty significantly this year. That was something from, in fiscal year '24.
And we're covered. It's because of the deed. It's, it's not like we're neglecting to provide town services to, to condo complexes I was expecting or told they would receive it. The deed says that we will not provide them.
So we want to hold off for right now?
Yeah, that's fine. I'll, I'll work on collecting more data and see if I can get us a closer estimate and more of an impact. Okay, so that leads us to MBTA communities. I know you heard from Aton, that's number 28, yeah, right? And you, did you, and you already voted, so I missed that in the war, so we're good. Okay, that's it.
That's it.
That's it.
Impressive.
I know.
They're still.
It's only 10 o'clock.
There's no more meeting.
Nobody can have a select board update, no. All right, let's do, we'll do consent items. We're accepting $5,000 from North Andover Youth Baseball. Take a motion.
I move that the select board accept the donation from the North Andover Youth Baseball, the amount of $5,000.
I'll second that.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Has everybody had a chance to look at the meeting minutes from April 8th? Any changes, adjustments, spell here? I mean, Dave will be in charge of reviewing the minutes now.
They were incredibly astutely.
As clerk, you have to sign off on them. I'll take a motion.
I move that the select board approve the open session minutes of April 8th, 2024 as presented.
I'll second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any select board updates? No? Good, okay. Anything? Anybody? No? 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 But the town manager.
I have a beautiful summary in my, in my packet. I do not need to read aloud. I can, and I'll do it in like a special voice if you want. The only thing I will say that is very, very important, the one thing, is that town meeting is May 14th at 6:30 PM.
Very important.
That's the most important thing.
Can I hear what the town, what, what, what the special voice would have been?
I don't know. I could, I mean, I feel like I could have done, I was going to channel Dee and do it like really excitedly, but I don't feel like. I don't feel like I have Dee's energy level right at this moment. I wish I did. I'm always at that. Oh, but you know what we should recognize?
The sustainability.
Sustainability community for their amazing cleanup, and also the installation of our fieldy AD.
Oh, yes!
I mean, how do we not talk about that? So those are being installed now. There's going to be 15 of them.
Very.
It's amazing. We're talking about doing ribbon cutting, so I will work on getting that done. But how exciting to see those, great use of oppo funds, and, you know, it's going to be a really great project. The first one was installed at the convent next to the stage.
I saw it, I didn't.
So, very exciting.
I do have one thing that I wanted to say that I forgot, and, because I.
Why, because we've been here for three hours?
No, 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 is for our Jewish friends who are celebrating Passover.
Passover, yes.
Let's see, our next meeting is May 2nd, I think? May 6th. Our next meeting is May 6th. It's 7 o'clock here in the select boardroom, and I will take a motion for adjournment.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody.